Community members online, can you hear me? Thumbs up please. Okay, thank you. The regular meeting for the Alamoana Kakaoko Neighborhood Board for May 2025 is now called to order at 6:03 PM. The Neighborhood Board system is here to foster civic engagement so we can make our communities a great place to live, play, work, and thrive. Now go through the roll call, Ms. Gomes. Okay. Chang.
Present.
Chi.
Present.
Chung. Not here yet. Davis. Farinas. Barringer.
Sorry, yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Chair Lee. Mariano. Rice. Vanderbrink. Okay, nine members present. Okay, thank you, Ms. Gomes. Now we go back to the decoral reminder. This is just a back-to-basics reminder for both Board members and the general public. We have this best practices for Board members sheet that I had passed out to the Board members. This is actually provided by NCO in the resources page, so thank you. But it is pretty much just a reminder to remain respectful and be mindful of everyone's time. As much as possible, we aim to cover everything on the agenda. And again, it can get long. Board meetings can notoriously get long. And as like, we would love for both the Board and the communities' participation in making sure that our meetings are run efficiently. For community member feedback, we do have a three-minute time limit. We may have some of that tonight. I see some community members here, so thank you for coming up. And again, I just wanted to remind the Board, you know, please speak when you're called on. So we don't do the whole back-and-forth thing because that kind of takes a little bit more time than it should. So, thank you, Board. Moving on, Public Safety Reports, Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening. My name is Firefighter 3 Yoshimura from Paua Fire Station, and I have the May 2025 Honolulu Fire Department report. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the NHB's geographic area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HPD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have questions, please email the HPD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hpdnhb@honolulu.gov, and the phone number is 808-723-7117. For the incident statistics for April 2025, we had one structure fire, two nuisance fires, which includes rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle, one cooking fire, and 21 activated alarms with no fire. Other emergencies, we had 138 medicals, seven motor vehicle crash collisions, one ocean rescue, and one hazardous materials incident. A fire safety tip for May 2025 is home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as the first line of defense against fires and often extinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit homefiresprinkler.org. Fire spreads quickly. A fire can turn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in home fires include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having working smoke alarms, fire sprinklers, and a practiced fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinances relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov. Last month, there were no questions asked. There's nothing to be answered. Do you have any questions for me today?
Thank you, Mr. Yoshimura. Member Vanderbrink.
Hi, thank you. So, I just had a question about fire hydrants, and this might be more of an HPD question, but since you're here, I thought I'd ask. In the back of Don Quixote on Kanunu Street, there is a fire hydrant kind of in the middle of where they do their deliveries. And I noticed it's kind of routinely blocked by delivery vehicles when they unload a product to the store. Is that something that you know is allowed or like permissible in a freight loading zone, or should it always be unblocked?
Supposed to always be unblocked, but if there's a driver there, they could always move if there happened to be an emergency. And I'm sure if a police officer arrives, they'll probably leave. So, I don't know how you stop that.
I just want to know if that was kind of allowed or just something they're just kind of getting away with. But it sounds like they're just kind of getting away with it because of the location.
Yes, to my knowledge, you're supposed to be no closer than 15 feet from the fire hydrants when you do park.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Vanderbrink. Any other Board members? Thank you, community members. Mr. Yoshimura, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Honolulu Police Department.
Hello, Sergeant Mochizuki here, District 1, Sector 3. In regard to the fire hydrant thing, I will submit that in my report so we more routinely address that to ensure that it's not blocked. I will share stats. Let's see. So... Sorry. So this is the area we that comprises this particular neighborhood board. Its sectors 3 and 4 in District 1 and... And here are the most updated stats just by category. The percentages only indicate the 2023 to 24 increase or decrease, but the this column has the current 2025 as of today. Are there any questions in regard to these stats?
Questions from the Board? Okay, questions from community members. Okay, no vote. One from Member Ronnie Chang.
Oh, yes.
Another one from Member Mariano. Okay, Member Chang.
Since we're on the topic of fire hydrants that are being blocked, you might want to take a look at Leona Street where Naan is doing their construction. They're always blocking it. They're always having something brought in or delivered. That fire hydrant always blocked. So if you can take a look at that, thank you.
Okay, will do. I'm noting it now.
Thank you, Member Chang. Member Chi and then Member Farinas.
Thank you for being here with us today. I had a quick question regarding, actually, Leona Street coincidentally. I've got a couple of complaints from residences in my district regarding the Matson shipping containers that are blocking off Leona Street. There's a lot of Matson shipping containers that get parked there, and it's probably, I don't know for sure, but it's probably because there's a warehouse over there, and I can't remember the company's name off the top of my head, but they utilize that warehouse. And so there's usually shipping containers there, but because Leona Street is a really narrow street, and it's a two-way street, it has come pretty close to causing some car accidents because the shipping container pretty much takes up half the street, and it's hard to get around it. So, I guess my first question is, one, is that allowed for them to be parking there? And two, if it is, what sort of precautions could be taken to kind of avoid accidents? And I do have one more question after this, but it's a separate question.
Okay, in regard to that, my understanding with containers of that nature is that a permit is required. So what I'll put in my report is a follow-up to, for an officer to check with the company to ensure they do have permits. And if they don't, we'll start the process of issuing citations or warnings and go that route. In regard to if the container is there legally, it's just a matter of, unfortunately, just people slowing down, honestly. I know the visibility is poor. It's a narrow street, but people speeding or jaywalking just doesn't help the situation. So keeping traffic safety in mind, which was going to be my tip for this month anyway, is key to preventing collisions. Because even if there's an immobile object, if people are driving safely within the speed limit and paying attention and not on their phones, honestly, it just decreases motor vehicle collisions by a great amount. So that would be my tip in regard to that. But I will have someone follow up and check to ensure they have a permit.
Awesome, thank you, Sergeant Mochizuki.
Sorry. What was your other question?
So the other question is, and this is another complaint that I received from some neighbors, is right along the intersection, or excuse me, where the old medical facility used to be, right along, oh gosh, is that Elm Street? I have received some complaints that some of the trucks and cars of the people who work there are parked really close to the intersection. And so it makes visibility really hard because it is a four-way intersection. And I know that caused a car accident about a month ago where a lady had some problems with visibility. Someone was speeding, and it caused an accident. I know people in the neighborhood have been calling HPD to, you know, every time there's a car parked too close to the center of the intersection, and that's blocking visibility to get them ticketed. But I was wondering, is there any other action that people should be taking to stop this? Or could HPD increase patrols there just to kind of minimize that risk? It is kind of a habitual issue.
We can definitely increase checks. I can add that to my report as well. Aside from that, if I'm thinking of the correct area, which I believe I am, then it doesn't constitute a violation that we can toe for. Unless it's in a towway zone, or it's blocking a fire hydrant, or completely blocking a driveway, or something of that nature. So the best we can do is hope to elicit some sort of positive response by enforcing. And, you know, we can talk to the community and the neighbors and ensure that they're not parking there. But I think, unfortunately, the best route for people to learn sometimes in this situation is for citations to get issued and for them to realize, oh, I'm not supposed to park there. So I do encourage people to call if they do see the violations because we are the district with the highest call volume on the island. So a lot of times, officers are running from case to case. So it's not something that they would stop for if they're going from one, you know, quote-unquote "hot call" to another hot call. So, but if we're called, we have to respond. We have to address it. And so I do encourage people to just call. I know it seems minor at times, but it is important that we know and that we address these things, and we're accountable to address them. So yeah, please do call. If not, if the patrol officers are busy, then the supervisors will pick up the slack, and I have no problem doing parking complaints and citing where necessary, so.
Awesome, thank you, Sergeant Mochizuki.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chi and Sergeant Mochizuki. We have another question from Member Farinas.
Hi, Sergeant Mochizuki. Thank you for being here and always making yourself accessible to us during our monthly meetings. Now, my concern and my resident concern is also joined us here, my neighbor's concern. On the 726 Kapialani Boulevard, there's a very popular Japanese food sushi restaurant. And there seems to be, when people are waiting in line on the road to get into the restaurant parking lot, as well as exiting the restaurant's parking lot, they block the sidewalk. Now, I brought this issue up a year ago, and what was told by HPD then was to report it on 311 as it's a non-emergency situation. So my neighbor recently was, the sidewalk was completely blocked for her to traverse the sidewalk. And she is handicapped, and she also utilizes, uses a motorized wheelchair to get around. And it's not just an isolated incident to my neighbor. I mean, it's for the kapuna, the kekis, the dog walkers, and even to myself. I've experienced before walking my dog where I don't understand why they don't just keep their cars on the road on Kapialani prior to turning into the parking lot driveway, and vice versa, prior to leaving the parking lot, keep the sidewalk clear. Now, you know, I don't want to inundate HPD, so I reached out to my councilman's office, Councilman Tyler Dos Santos, and what was told by his office workers is that blocking the sidewalk, whether it be a parked car, a moving vehicle, is a citable offense. And in the issue of my neighbor, she, it was, she almost got hit by a car. And when she did call HPD, because she wasn't injured, there was nothing they could do about it. So, help? Can you help resolve this situation? Or in terms of perhaps is the onus upon the restaurant owner or make them aware that their patrons are going to get cited? It is something to be taken seriously. And again, I asked City Council, can you put up a sign, do not block the sidewalk? And they said, no, City can't do that. So, so I'm open to suggestions, and my neighbor and myself and all, you know, the district, we really need your help on this. Thank you.
So I will say that what the officers who responded said is correct. That's one of the offenses that, there's certain violations that if we don't view it, then we are generally unable to cite for it. So if it's, if they don't actually see it happening, they aren't allowed to cite for that particular violation. Beyond that, I, that's in my sector, I will go talk to the business owners when they're open during my shift, and I'll see if they can put their own signage up to remind their customers, because that's who's going to lose out, is the customers, right? I mean, beyond, obviously, the people that are trying to use the sidewalk and aren't able to traverse safely. But if their customers start getting cited, it's going to affect their business. So I will talk to them, I'll reach out to them and see if they can put something up or have a lot attendant or someone to remind the patrons to not block the sidewalk at the very least.
Thank you, so appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Farinas. Second Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight as well. I want to just bring to HPD's attention in Ward Village where the new Kolo Walo Dog Park is, on the Maoka side of Queen Street. You know, you have Kolo Walo Makai where the playground is and Kolo Walo Maoka where the new dog park is. People are parking illegally all day long and into the night, and it's becoming a danger. There's five parking stalls with meters, but last night, when I walked 5 o'clock and then again around 9 o'clock, there were 12 cars parked illegally, not in parking stalls, one blocking the fire hydrant. And that was in the earlier timeframe, and then in the later timeframe, there were probably 10 cars. And the other thing that's important to note is that the new crosswalk at Waianu and Queen Street is steps away. So people are coming with their dogs, people are coming with their kids. When they're coming with their kids, they don't walk to the crosswalk, they jaywalk, morning, noon, and night. And the dog people are the ones that are parking illegally, in my opinion, and hop out, and they think they're only going to be in the dog park for a short time, but they're actually there for quite some time. It's just dangerous. As people are driving from Peek E'Koi, you're coming two lanes, and then quickly you got a narrow to one lane, and then quickly it turns at the driveway to South Shore Market, it becomes two lanes again. And then after a come a kate, it becomes one. It's just something that, it would be appreciated if someone could pay a little more attention to that and get, especially the, I hate to say it, the dog people to not park there because it's just dangerous. Thank you.
Okay, as with the other answers, yeah, absolutely, we can submit that and increase the amount of checks and patrols in the area. But I would implore that anyone just calls when they see the violations, and it will be addressed. And the reality is that our job in the end is to educate people, and whether that happens through words or citations, I mean, that's our duty. So, one way or another, we will do our best to address it. I'm always open to suggestions as well, if anybody has any cool ideas, but.
Thank you, Sergeant Mochizuki. We have two more questions, one from Member Mariano and one from Member Vanderbrink.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm looking at your property crime stats, and I've been talking about this for years now, but I noticed there's no category for graffiti, whether it be private property or public. And, you know, over the last six months, graffiti has been growing, rather be on private property or even on public. So if it's on there, I'm not sure what the code is, but is it possible from here on out that you can report graffiti because it has a big impact, even if it's on private property? And I understand, you know, we've been lectured on that, that is the owner's responsibility, but they're still going to report that and get an HPD report. So if we can get that, we can also see if there's a way to try to counter the graffiti because by keeping stats on that, I think it'll be worthwhile and keep the Alamoana Kakaoko area beautified. Thanks.
So the property crime stats that I have up right now are run by our district burglary theft detail, and I'll ask that either they or the misdemeanor follow-up detail, which I think the graffiti cases would be handled by, send out monthly stats. To my knowledge, there was one graffiti case that was documented in, well, since the last time I came to a Board, which was two months ago. I did not come last month.
Hi, Sergeant. So I had a question and also referenced the graffiti and then other issue after. In reference to the graffiti on the old Ross store on Kanunu Street, there's currently a large piece of graffiti that was put on the side of the parking garage there. It's about five stories up the parking garage, and it goes from the fifth story to about the third story. It looks like something that probably took all night to be able to do because they had to probably hang down from the top of the parking structure. Did your officers happen to notice anything during the last few weeks in terms of graffiti there?
So the tricky part is that, like the other Board members said, that we do need a person to be a complainant to generate the initial case, at least. The problem we run into, this happened with Walgreens, a number of large businesses that pulled up stakes and left, is that nobody serves as a complainant. And honestly, a lot of companies, I hate to say it, just stop caring once they leave, once they vacate. And in cases like that, even if we caught someone doing the act, we wouldn't necessarily be able to arrest them because we have no complainant to confirm whether they're willing to testify in court, whether the person had permission to commit the act, and it just creates a number of issues. As far as that, I can have the Sector 4 Sergeant try to reach out to whoever might own the property now and see if they can at least do some sort of cleanup beyond just reporting it. But honestly, I don't know. A lot of these property owners, I don't think, have the investment in the community that a lot of us do.
Okay, just to let you know, the property owner, there's actually been the same group of individuals. It was just a leaseholder, which was Ross, that ended their lease. And I don't know the property owners exactly, but it's First Hawaiian Bank is one of them. Oh, sorry, Sergeant. Go ahead.
No, 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 that's what I was going to ask.
Okay, and the second issue was with the Kolo Walo Dog Park. I know it was vandalized, I believe, last month. In reference to the investigation of that, are you able to reveal if you've perhaps arrested anyone or a group of people for the vandalism there?
I don't have that information offhand, but I can bring it. I believe I'll be here next month. If not, I'll pass it to Sergeant Ostachuk, who will probably be, who covers when I'm not here.
Much appreciated. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board members. If we have no further questions, community members? Okay, sorry if you can just go up to the mic, introduce yourself. Sure?
No, since we have...
You can say your name first, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm Ian Washburn. I'm Livid Sunset Towers 419 Atkinson. Any other identifiers? Okay, for the Police Department and the Fire Department, I'm just wondering, I think it was October, there was a big fire, and there's a building on Aloha. There's three residential buildings. One of them is 1621 Aloha, but it's, I believe it's owned by the city, and this building has been sitting here, sitting there for over 10 years since the city bought it, and it's loaded with graffiti of all kinds. And back in October, there was a multi-alarm fire. They had a lot of equipment out there. And I'm just wondering if anybody can bring us up to speed on what the, what the city plans to do with that? It's loaded with graffiti. Why can't they keep it clean, et cetera, et cetera? Thank you.
But that is District 6, so I have no information about that building or the incident itself. I can forward this to District 6 and try and get some information, but that's kind of where it ends for me until they get back to me.
Thank you, and then we have one more. Say your name, sir.
Yep, James Gishen, Sugar Sugar Hawaii. Hey. Hey, thanks for taking my question. So I was walking in Port Street Mall earlier today, and I know there's a new, I believe, like, mental health triage or substance triage center in, I'm not sure where, but in Chinatown or something like that. When I was there, I was just eating at Matata Tama, and there was like, literally like, three or four people just, not all at once, but walking by and screaming at random people and screaming out profanities and stuff. So I asked the security that's there, you know, should we maybe do something about this? Because they're just kind of chilling in their little rover things. And they're like, I was like, I can call 911 or something. And they're like, uh, no, 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 you know, if we call HPD, they're just not going to do anything. So I was like, but isn't this like an MH4 or an MH1 or something like that that we can handle? And so I was just kind of like, I don't know, a downer. So is, what is the process? Like, because I know I don't really have to ask them, I can just do it myself. So what is the process? How would I address that if someone is just kind of going, they're having a mental health crisis or they're having a substance crisis?
So in a case like that, it could qualify as disorderly conduct or possibly MH1, like you mentioned. So again, I would encourage you to just call the police, let the officers make the determination. There's a number of questions that we have to ask to determine if the person is in immediate danger to themselves or other people, and then we would go from there. But it's case by case, and to be completely honest, it depends on the officer, their interpretation of the person's behavior. Some of us are more educated and experienced in reading behaviors, in substance abuse, the signs of substance abuse, mental health issues. So like any other job, it's, you get a range of officers, and some are more experienced and some are less. So I can't guarantee what the outcome will be, but I can say that you should call so that they can address it and take it case by case, person by person.
Thank you. Just a really quick follow-up. So if they are not a danger to themselves or to the public, we're not really going to know that because, I mean, by that time, it's too late, right? Because that was actually one of the things with security, like, oh, if they attack somebody, then we'll call. I'm like, that's kind of counterintuitive. I mean, common sense would dictate, well, now, or they attack somebody. So let's say, so how would we handle it if we cannot prove that they're a danger to the public?
That's again where the officer would make the determination by doing a little bit of investigating and trying to talk to the person and seeing what kind of, you know, issues they might be having in regard to their mental health, substance abuse issues, things like that. It is, it is very dependent on who responds and the person in crisis themselves. So I don't agree with what that security person told you because by the time someone's already been assaulted, we've fallen short on what we're supposed to do as a community and as a department. So, yeah, let's try to address those things sooner than later so they don't become bigger issues. I mean, that's my feeling.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Gishen, thank you, and we'll see you again under Community Concerns later on. Representative Iwamato.
Thank you. I got contacted earlier this week by a gentleman who lives on Sheridan, right where it intersects with Kapialani Boulevard, kind of in an apartment building near the Blue Cross Blue Shield Pet Hospital. He mentioned that there's some pre-game drinking, pre-gaming, or before people go to nightclubs in the area. Some, yeah, a lot of young people just drinking and leaving their bottles or getting really loud. And so he's actually called the police before, and he mentioned it took them 30 minutes. And he, and I guess he's called multiple times, and sometimes they just come and they drive by, but don't really, he notices or he's observed that there's no engagement. It's like the police officer doesn't step out of the car and talk to the young people who are all loitering on the sidewalk and in the cars. who are all loitering on the sidewalk and in the cars, who may or may not have open containers. So he wants to know, is that normal? Should he expect anything different if he continues to call when this kind of noisy nuisance behavior is happening at midnight or 12 o'clock in the morning?
Sorry, sorry, let me note down the time real quick before I answer. You know, it should be standard for an officer to at least investigate to some degree to see that there's no violations going on and they should address any violations. Whether it be by counseling and telling them, hey, cleanup, get out of here, or what have you. Just sitting in your car is not against the law, standing on the sidewalk is not against the law. But if the volume gets to a point where it's disorderly or there are open containers, then yeah, that's definitely violations. So in my opinion, as a supervisor, they should absolutely be addressing violations at the very least. This, again, with the other issues, I'll submit it and ensure that this goes all the way up to our chiefs. So they will see what the issues are. And I send it also to the other sergeants that work in the affected areas so that they're aware. And I'm hoping that they'll increase their enforcement. I'm on the day watch shift, so we end at about 6:30, 7 o'clock. So this would be out of my general purview, but I will send it to them. But yeah, I'm sorry that there's a lack of engagement when it comes to that and probably a lack of investigation. So hopefully we can step it up for you.
So in the meantime, I just hope to keep calling, keep calling and keep reporting and give you guys a chance to do better. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Representative Iwomoto. And Sergeant Motzuki, there is also a comment online from Member Ferenger, if you could see it, regarding the Dave and Buster's opening in Alamoana and noise complaints. If you could take a look at that and add that to-
I'm trying to figure this out, so.
Okay.
Oops. Nope.
We can just read that, yeah. We can just read it for you. Please note that since Dave and Buster's opened in Alamoana, noise complaints due to cars exhausts have increased. It would be great if HPD would note and cite when appropriate. So that was a comment from Member Ferenger online.
Can we get a specific time on that? Is that possible?
Member Ferenger? Okay, she, it looks like she's not online. We don't have a specific time, but we just wanted to make sure that you noted that comment.
Okay, I'll note it. I'm guessing if anything, it's more likely during closing hours or after closing. So I'll look into that. I'll send it also to Night Watch to monitor and hopefully increase enforcement in the area for that.
Okay, thank you, Sergeant Motzuki for being here this evening. Go ahead, Member Ferenger.
So sorry, my computer locks up and I apologize. It is in the evening. It is especially at closing. They closed around 1:00 PM, 1:00 AM, I believe. And it's at that time of the evening where we specifically notice it.
Okay, I've noted it and I will send that up.
Okay, thank you. We have one more question and then we'll move on to the next agenda item. And for any other further questions, we, just so we can go through the agenda item after this question, any questions you have, we'll go through Community Concerns. If you could state your name.
Hi there, Michelle Opatek. I'm actually gonna make a comment about you guys doing a great job, HPD. Kiwala Basin Harbor, because of jurisdictions being sheriffs, city and county, state, private property, a lot of homeless were living in the park. And you guys have really swept it up. I've noticed that the maintenance people at night when they close the gate, they literally go along the walkway and try to make sure that everyone's out. You've done a great job doing that. Every so often, there's possibly someone's hiding in the bushes. I know you guys can't get out and walk around, but is that something that is gonna happen maybe with the ATVs or something like that? I've even seen ATVs before cruising around Alamoana and Kiwala Park. But thank you for doing a great job. Past few months have been really a big difference.
Thank you for that. What time of day are we talking? Are we talking during park closure?
Pretty much right before the park closes, you know, on a Friday night. I went to Friday night fireworks and I just noticed later at night, there was a lot more people just kind of literally in the bushes, you know, with their little tent. But you guys have been doing a great job. Like the Dare Let Cars are gone. People that were really setting up tents over by Alamoana Beach Park by the Viki stations.
We've been putting a lot of effort toward-
You've done a great job.
Increasing enforcement for that, so thank you. In regard to that, if they're with tents, then that's not allowed in the park and it can be addressed. I'll attach our ATV detail to this as well because while we can walk through the park, it's a big park and the ATV detail is just so much more mobile than us. And they tend to, I don't want to say specialize, but they work on these violations a lot more closely than patrol generally does, just because patrol has to handle the radio and manage all the calls that come in. So I will add them as well.
Thank you. One more comment from Member Davis and then we'll move on.
Sorry, the shout-out gave me an idea. Really, the ATV unit, I wanted to shout them out for just always wearing helmets. It's just something that I'm really passionate about. I think it's one thing that we can do to encourage more people to wear helmets and hopefully reduce the amount of accidents. So I just want to appreciate that HPD is leading by example there. Thanks.
Thank you. And like real quick, my safety tip of the month, sorry, traffic-related stuff, school's out soon. So just pay attention when you drive. That's kind of, traffic fatalities are just way up this year and we all gotta do our part to try and decrease that.
Hey, Sergeant Motzuki, thank you for being here to answer the board and community questions. We appreciate all that you folks do.
Thank you.
The time is now 6:39. Moving on to presentations, we have the Honolulu Night Market at Our Kakaako with Gabriel Richter. I understand the date has been changed. So Ms. Richter, if you're online?
Yeah, thank you. She actually couldn't be here tonight, so I'm Summer and I'm gonna be presenting on behalf of the Honolulu Night Market this evening. So yes, thank you. The date has changed to Saturday, July 19th. This event happens annually, so exciting event. We have about 80 food and retail vendors coming out alongside musicians, fashion designers, artists. So it's a really exciting event that we love to bring to the community of Kakaako. Our website will be launching on Monday, June 23rd. This is where you can find all of our updates, including a full vendor list, stage schedule, and some exciting free activities that will be taking place as well. These are gonna be our planned road closures. So similar to previous years, Awaki Street between Keahave and Cook Street from 1 to midnight. Keahave Street between Awahi and Pohukeina between 1 and midnight. And Coral Street between Alamoana and Awahi Street. I do want to note, we go up a little bit further towards Coral Commercial Center, but that driveway will remain open as well as all other residential parking. Buildings should remain accessible to driveways as well. These are social media Instagram handles if you would like to follow us for event updates. And again, our website with additional details will be launching on June 23rd. This again is just another map, just emphasizing driveways will remain open. This driveway in particular is one we get a lot of questions on, so I just want to emphasize. Coral Street to Coral Commercial Center will remain open. There's also this Pohukeina Street driveway that will remain open and accessible to patrons that day. I'm happy to take questions this evening, but this is also my direct email. If anybody has follow-up questions or wants to get in contact with me about this event or other events happening in Our Kakaako.
Hey, Ms. Castor, thank you for that presentation. Board members, questions? Member Mariano?
Just a quick question. I know that you're gonna keep that one street open. Have you folks considered a temporary speed bump that you can put down? Because lately, you know, worldwide, whenever there's an event that's going on, there's cars that's traversing in really fast to roll over pedestrians. So one way to do that is maybe consider temporary speed bumps that you can publicly rent and put that out.
Yeah, are you referring to the Coral Street? That's partially open, that one?
Yes, because if you look at the map again, you know, I think that's where you're gonna have a abundance of foot traffic. So that might be something to kind of consider doing.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. We work with city and county and statewide safety services. So in my meeting with them next month, I can absolutely bring that up and see if that's something we might be able to add.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Any other board members? Community, okay. Ms. Summer Castor, thank you for that presentation and letting us know about the Honolulu Night Market.
Thank you.
Item 3.2, Follow the Drop Initiative with Cyrus Howe of Hawaii Green Growth.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair, members of the board and neighbors. My name is Cyrus Howe. I'm a resident of Makiki and of the Alawai watershed. I'll be doing a short presentation on this initiative to designate the Alawai watershed as a special improvement district. Just to introduce Hawaii Green Growth, we're a local nonprofit that's mostly well-known for our Aloha Plus Challenge dashboard, basically reporting all the data and progress or lack thereof towards our sustainability goals. This special improvement district idea came from the Alawai watershed collaboration. So kind of like Hawaii Green Growth, this is also a network of public-private partnerships. And it's comprised of stakeholders who live and really care deeply about the well-being of our watershed. This next slide is just a picture of the watershed's boundaries. So you can think of it as between Diamond Head and Punch Bowl from the Ko'olau ridge tops all the way to the beach. And on there are some of the Alawai watershed collaboration partners. So I guess it shouldn't have to be said, but you know, water is important for life. And these are just a few of the different ways we do this presentation for diversity of audiences. And then this is also why we explain where our water comes from and the importance of watersheds. In contrast to the mainland where some of these can stretch for thousands of miles, we can see ours every day. And so the next slide will show kind of the precipitation and the importance particularly of these upper watersheds where our forests are, where they're typically enshrouded by clouds and recharging about 40% of our drinking water. Their well-being is very important also because evapotranspiration, you can kind of think of it as steam that's released by the trees that goes into generating more clouds. So that's a really important feedback loop that is threatened by hazards like wildfire that cause, this is just a picture from the Mililani Malka Fire that happened just a few months after Lahaina, 2023. Next slide shows what can happen. You know, in this case, you have looser soil, higher risk of landslide, and it's just a lot harder to regrow and reforest than it is to protect our existing forests. This slide just shows kind of a before and after or present comparison of the urban watershed we call home here. This picture on the right shows we have about 4,500 acres of impervious or impenetrable surface area in our watershed. That's concrete rooftops, the equivalent of our airport, just to give you an idea of the sheer spread of concrete here. And then this slide just shows kind of the rain to runoff pipeline. So it comes off of our rooftops, it collects all the nasty stuff that's up there, also our driveways, streets into the storm drains, into the streams. Every major storm event causes the Alawai Canal to make the news. Following slides show some pictures of, well, after these, of what that looks like. This is just a map of our, it looks kind of like a hybrid of man-made, concrete, you know, sort of rectangular square angles, going back and forth between that, channelization and natural streams. This picture is just down the hill from St. Louis School at the Palolo Stream. So you can see in the background, well, speaking of graffiti, but what I was describing there, the constructed channels. And so you can imagine what this does to stream biology, our ecosystems and water quality, and also risk of flood. So we hope that with this special improvement district, organizations that are already working to, you know, address like albizia and other invasives, capturing storm water before it hits the storm drains, will cumulatively help not only mitigate brownwater runoff, but also simultaneously recharge our aquifers where we get all of our drinking water from. And then also just benefit the resiliency, the long-term life and well-being of residents here. The next slide will show. So this is not a new idea. This has gone back to, you know, the Punahiki days of Moku and Ahupuaa management. More recently, in the 90s, the DOH submitted a report where they also, the authors recommended having some kind of district to better manage the watershed. And we've commissioned, Hawaii Green Growth and the Alawai Watershed Collaboration have commissioned feasibility reports exploring the, you know, legal avenues and how to, you know, set up the governance and all these things. So this is, you know, a serious initiative that we've been bouncing off with council members, including Chair Waters. And we've been getting good feedback from them, including to engage community through neighborhood boards. We've also had productive meetings with Protect Our Alawai and other stakeholders that helped us redraft the bill that has not yet been introduced yet. But we want that to be equitable and something that, you know, we have a strong kind of cohort behind. On the left, Fort Street Mall, Business Improvement District. And then on the right, Waikiki Beach Improvement District. You can see the guys in the bottom right there, the Aloha ambassadors. Districts are basically just special kind of areas with designations and purposes. So Waikiki Beach, as you can imagine, was to keep that area tidy and safe. And so, you know, similarly, what we're going for in Alawai. I just wanted to end this presentation with some examples of what these projects that would benefit from a special improvement district like this could look like. So rain catchment, I just include this picture here because, you know, you have homeowners associations, property management. It can happen despite, you know, some of those sometimes competiments. Big shout-out to the Mokulani there. Next slide shows Rain Garden on the left-hand side of the Waikiki Aquarium. So these are very good at helping rainwater inundate into the aquifers and our groundwater. Now, this is what albizia eradication looks like. A lot of times, these are up very unreachable areas, very expensive to take down. Big shout-out to Ko'olau Mountains Watership Partnership. Those folks are like, if you imagine National Geographic, they're going on helicopters, sometimes spending the nights in these remote ridge tops. And I mean, you see some of their pictures, their night vision of the wild pigs that they're hunting and they're putting up fencing. So they're embedded. They're, yeah, real heroes. And then just some other project examples, you've probably seen some of these booms in the Alawai Canal for debris catchment. I think a Senate bill just passed to commission more research from UH to explore and develop this a little bit more. Shout-out to 808 Cleanups. They're a very small nonprofit that we would, you know, love to see also get more, you know, funding and resources and support to do the amazing thing that they do across Oahu, really. And then just, you know, some of the native species that aren't humans that are really important, that we should care about and value, that'll benefit. We've set up a website as a sort of hub for all of our information, including the draft bill and all the feasibility studies and reports that have gone into it. That's the QR code on the screen there. The URL, it's, we're a nonprofit, so we use the Google site there. But I like to think that it's a good place worth visiting for more information. Otherwise, my email is with the Neighborhood Board and the Commission. So thank you very much, everyone. If we have time for questions?
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Questions from the board? Member Mariano?
Cyrus, very good presentation. Thank you. You know, I have some concerns. You know, we had the prices at Red Hill, you know, and not to get to belabor that aspect. And the challenge was the aquifer where it was built. So with all this runoff and things that you're doing, is your committee looking at maybe repurposing some of the existing aquifer by enlarging it to capture more rainwater to go there? Because in this area here, Alamoana Kaka, we have increased in the population size. And so water becomes not only life for health, but also life to extinguish fires. And so we probably would need maybe a dam or something similar to that that would be available to first responders, but the main thing for water for life for the other aspect. So by looking at the aquifers that's currently around, either enlarging it or if there's a community area that's, there's a gap, maybe consider building something similar so that we could capture nature's water. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that's a really good question, and thank you for that. Previous proposals by the US Army Corps of Engineers to put detention basins on a watershed in order to provide that function didn't go anywhere. I think maybe Board of Water Supply could speak to the underground stores and aquifers a little bit better. But my understanding is that the way to sort of expand those capacities is to capture the rainwater uphill. So the Follow the Drop initiative that actually I lead at Hawaii Green Growth is to assess rainwater footprints at the property level. And then that tells us the square footage, size of rain gardens, for example, to explore and/or rain barrels, bioswales, all of these ways to either conserve, capture, or otherwise intercept rainwater before it hits the streets. I hope that's an adequate answer.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Any other questions from the board? Member Vandabrink?
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. I wanted to ask, you brought up the Fourth Street Improvement District and the Waikiki Special Improvement District as well. Both of those have funds raised by the businesses there for a specific purpose. In reference to this special improvement district that you're proposing, it encompasses all of the downtown area. How would that essentially be funded?
That's a great question, and the honest answer is we don't have a hashed out answer quite yet. The one hope is that the yet-to-be enacted stormwater utility fee would be potentially one source of funding. Right now, our sort of operating kind of answer is that as a collective formally recognized by local government, we would be in a better position to seek and apply for funding, whether that's philanthropical or private or other sources.
So yeah, that was kind of my concern that if raising funds based on the local residents here in community, because there's already being a, on the sewer side, there's a hundred and thirteen percent increase proposed for the sewage rate increase there. So I just have a concern that if you're adding on another, basically a tax there for residents to help fund the special improvement district, that's kind of like a double whammy in terms of taxes that we'll have to pay. And there, I know the hundred and thirteen percent sewage rate increase has already caused a lot of concern for residents. So that on top of it would definitely get some pushback.
Yeah, it's a super important point. This bill explicitly says that there will be no additional tax assessment to raise funds for this. The stormwater utility, they're grappling with how to make it equitable, and I think they're on the right track. So, but I don't know, maybe council members in the room might have a better idea of what that, the status of that is. But I don't know when that's expected.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Let me ask a question real quick, and then I'll turn over to Mr. Chang. As you're going around through the neighborhood boards with your very detailed presentation, and we thank you for that, do you have a specific ask for the boards as far as what you'd like to do, what the organization would like to do aside from support?
Yeah, just any help socializing it. You know, we're welcoming critiques and feedback. I mean, that's how we've gotten to this point where we're comfortable sharing it sort of this broadly. So right now, just any help thinking about it, socializing it, and then accessing the website to, you know, dissect it even further.
You, Member Chang?
Yeah, you should be like talking to these guys that are coming up soon, Towel Corp. Talk to them about finding ways to like capture that water that's coming off of their structures and their buildings. That would be, that would be another area where you could take a look at.
Hey, if there are no further questions, Mr. Cyrus Howe, thank you for being here this evening for the presentation. Moving on to item three point three, the YMCA rezoning of four oh one Atkinson Drive is Mr. Isaiah Sato of RM Towel Corporation. While he's gearing up his presentation for him to come up here, I do want to acknowledge the community members that have sent in testimony. Our neighborhood assistant, Kamuya Gomes, has forwarded that to the board. So we have read the testimony. I also want to emphasize that we're not voting on anything tonight. This is the first time that we're hearing this presentation, same as the rest of you folks. So we'll hear what Mr. Sato has to say.
Thank you for the introduction, Kathleen, and thank you for having me, members of the board and members of the community. Happy to present on this exciting project today. So my name is Isaiah Sato, as Mr. Chang had mentioned, and I work at RM Towel Corporation. There too. Before I jump into the Y, I just wanted to note, I do have a background in civil engineering. And I know in stormwater quality, the city in the last few years have been enacting more requirements that require new developers to capture things on site. So there has been a good movement in stormwater. Okay, back to the project. So today, I'm going to be talking about the central YMCA zone change. There are, I do have some members from the YMCA in the room with me, Greg, the president and CEO of the YMCA here too, if we have any YMCA specific questions. Just wanted to recognize him there too. But the central YMCA, so first, I want to take a step back kind of in time and talk about YMCA in Honolulu. So there's a lot of detail here and some people a little bit farther back, so I'll quickly read through these slides. But YMCA Honolulu began back in eighteen sixty-nine, and it was a group of visionaries aiming to support Honolulu's growing community, starting with prayer meetings, Sunday school aid, reading room, and it expanded to physical education, youth clubs, rural outreach, camping, and a bunch of other things there. So the new one YMCA became a landmark in racial integration, you know, back in the eighteen sixties. And, you know, over the decades, what YMCA has adapted, you know, through the wars, economic shifts, and really through the times that changed to be what it is today. Just to give you an example, eighteen sixty-nine, the monarch was actually Kamuya the Fifth. So that was a long time ago that the Y has been here, and they've been really an important part, I think, in Oahu and developing out here. So this next slide shows the YMCA today, or YMCA Honolulu today. So their mission, the YMCA is a fellowship dedicated to putting Christian principles into practice through programs that build a healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. So there's a big variety of programs there. I'm sure you guys are familiar with them. They have kid, teen, young adult family programs that aim to find academic enrichment, leadership, service, learning, and quality-time opportunities from preschoolers all the way up to parents there. They also have senior activities, you know, they have classes, activities, social events for older adults. They have health and fitness. They have gyms across the island there too, as well as summer camp and a bunch of other things. So what I want to be talking about today is their, what they call the central YMCA location. So it's at four oh one Atkinson Drive, right in the middle of this screen in that Lego piece blue there. So just to kind of orient yourself, at the bottom, the road in yellow is Alamoana Boulevard. And then, of course, there's Atkinson coming off that right in front of the site. The big building on the left, of course, is Alamoana Center. See if my laser pointer can work here. So Alamoana Center, Alamoana Hotel, this is Atkinson Drive, Mahu Kona Street, and there are projects right here, Central YMCA four oh one Atkinson. This next slide shows a street view if you're standing on Mahu Kona side. So across the street, Alamoana Center, next to Alamoana Hotel, and we're looking at the site here too. So the site is this full side from this left, which is a parking lot here, gymnasium, excuse me, in the back. On the right here is where there's the dormitories that are currently still being used to this day. So some history on specifically the central YMCA. So the central Y was dedicated back in October nineteen fifty-one, and it included health and fitness rooms, a hundred and thirteen residential rooms, club and craft rooms, chapel, gym, pool, large athletic area, and a snack shop. So it's a fairly large site in town, one point seven acres there. And I really like this photo. It kind of shows the, I like looking at the cars in the bottom, different lifestyle back in the fifties. So our current facilities at the Y consist of, there's an existing five-story room housing, which is active and operational. In addition to the dormitories, there's a three-story multipurpose building. The ground floor has parking, and there's a swimming pool, gymnasium in the area. The entire building area is about sixty-seven thousand square feet, and they have about three hundred and forty feet of frontage along Atkinson Drive. So currently, the YMCA is operating the dormitory. They operate a hundred and fifteen rooms at any given time, and they're about at seventy-five percent capacity. So if you're wondering who's there, there's probably about ninety to a hundred people in those dorms at any given time. The other facilities have been temporarily closed or under maintenance. Now getting into the meat of our request, or what we're going to be working with the city on is the zone change. So I want to talk first about the zoning history. So back in twenty thirteen, there is an ordinance thirteen dash thirty-four. I think some of you might have been familiar with the zone change back in twenty thirteen. But at that time, the YMCA partnered with a developer, Aloha Kai Development, excuse me, and they upzoned the lot, which was originally A two apartment, a medium-density apartment, excuse me, and the building height limit was a hundred and fifty feet and the density or four-area ratio was one point nine. So they upzoned it to the current zoning. So that was prior to twenty thirteen. The current zoning today is AMX three, high-density apartment, mixed-use, three hundred and fifty feet max height, with a four-area ratio of two point eight there too. So at the time, the site was intended to be redeveloped as a residential condominium, community room, as well as a recreational facility there. So since then, or that site was specifically upzoned for a specific development that was proposed with this development partner, Aloha Kai Development. After, you know, years of negotiation between the nonprofit YMCA and the development company, the development had been terminated. So we're really looking for a path forward on this project. So in twenty thirteen or in that ordinance, it also contained, just to know, specific conditions based on the development being proposed by Aloha Kai Development. So these conditions related to the number of units allowed, vehicle and pedestrian access, street frontage requirements, design guidelines, and affordable housing requirements. Over the years, you know, since twenty thirteen, the YMCA, you know, received various inquiries, several inquiries to purchase the property. However, all of the potential development partners or buyers expressed concerns about these requirements on site. So just so you guys know, with a zone change, usually when you upzone, you don't just get free upzoning. Usually they tie in additional requirements, yeah, that tie into the lot. So for them, they had lot limits on the number of units as well as other things. So what we want to do today is we're requesting to revert this zone change, go back to pre-two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve, and go back to its original A two zoning, remove the restrictions, go back to the hundred and fifty-foot height limit and the density of one point nine FER, and really allow the Y to move forward. Thank you. Yeah, so twenty twelve or pre-two thousand thirteen, the max height was a hundred and fifty, and it was owned for apartments, medium-density apartments. And for a development that was proposed at that time, they got it rezoned up to three hundred and fifty. So right now, currently, if a developer came in and, you know, wanted to meet all the restrictions and wanted to develop up to three hundred and fifty, they could. What the Y wants to do is they want to go back, kind of back in time, essentially, back to two thousand twelve, reduce the height back down to a hundred and fifty, go back from a mixed-use site to just a medium-density apartment site there, and also remove the additional restrictions that were tied to that zone change.
Was that the end of the presentation? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sato. Questions from the board? Second vice chair Rice, and then Member Chang, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Sato. Appreciate the information. If the new development is approved and moves forward, will there still be a Y in that location?
Yeah, there's, the Y is not seeking to develop the site. They're just seeking to downzone it and potentially sell it. So that future development is not part of this zone change.
Okay, thank you. And so if I could please ask the Y, does the Y plan on moving to a new location to serve the community, which it has been for all these years?
Hi, I'm Greg Wyble. I'm the CEO of the YMCA. We do not have plans to continue operations if and when this forever to be sold to somebody else. But it's been thirteen years, and we've been operating and will continue to operate until we no longer own the property.
One more question, please. Is there, is the Y still being used? Is it still very popular and all that? So isn't there a need for it in the community?
Yeah, so we provide transitional housing. About a third of our residents right now are kind of the long-term people that are being there, and about a third are a little bit shorter term, and then others are a little bit more turnover. So we have, this is the only property that we've been operating in this way, and it's really not within our strategy going forward. And so a lot of YMCA's across the country have gotten out of directly delivering the housing. And so that's our long-term strategy as well.
Thank you.
Okay, my question is, so the idea is to downzone it so that you can sell it? And then whoever buys it, they would have to come back with another plan on how they want to develop it. That's exactly correct? Okay, I just want to make sure because, you know, a lot of people are like, what? If I go backwards. So, but because of the other zoning that fell through, there were too many restrictions. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Chang. Member Vandabrink, then Member Freneus after.
Hi, thank you. So we got some public testimony recently in reference to opposing rezoning because they didn't want a monster condominium to be built there, but it seems like there might have been some confusion there. The rezoning is actually going to shrink the building footprint if and when it gets resold up to a hundred and fifty feet. So I just wanted to make that clarification. But yeah, I think that's just why I wanted to mention.
Hi again. And with the increase in height, what are those restrictions? I'm just curious if it were to stay as is the zone?
Yeah, so there's a handful of restrictions. One is there's a strict affordable housing requirement. It's a thirty percent of residential units at sixty percent AMI, which is a very low affordability range for sixty years. We typically don't see those AMIs without any type of state or public, you know, funding or subsidies or tax credits there too. So the development as is is just not feasible in today's market at all. And then there's some other, excuse me, sorry, got off topic. But some of the other ones is, you know, when they're working on like their parking structure, they need to have, you know, specific parking structure requirements. They have to submit against the city to review that. They have specific traffic management plan they need to prepare. City needs to review that. They have to provide pedestrian easements to allow pedestrians to cross certain portions of the site. And there's also a limit on how many units they can have.
Member Davis?
Sorry, thanks. I'm just kind of trying to piece it all together too. But, you know, both kind of between the YMCA is providing some transitional housing now and with the change in zoning, which, again, I don't necessarily personally, I got to read more testimony and think about it, but see any harm to that. But in doing so, it makes the property more attractive to buyers who then, you know, might not have to provide traditional housing, which doesn't really- which doesn't really fall to the YMCA, but just something for the state to consider. And again, that's a huge chunk of transitional housing, which we already have a shortage of, you know. So not on the YMCA necessarily to be beholden to that, but, you know, potentially putting on, just making sure that AMI is included in that. And it doesn't seem like it is at that A2 permitting.
Yes, so the transitional housing has been there for a very long time. I mean, you know, since 1951. So the zone change, 150 feet, 350 feet, A2 AMX is still going to be there, you know, as Greg mentioned, until they move on and follow their YMCA strategy.
A question. The current structure right now, I understand like years ago, I thought it was going to not be there anymore, but it looks like plans have changed. What is the current height of that? Just so we have an idea of, is that at 150?
No, not at all. Let me try to go back to. This is an old one from the 50s, but I'll try to pick it up there. Yeah, see, so the parking structure on the left is three stories. So it's like 30 to 40 feet. The dormitory on the right is five stories. So again, it's like 50 to 60 feet there. And that's the five stories, the tallest part of the entire lot. Five stories, so it's roughly about 50 to 60 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Sato. A member Mariano.
Yeah, Mr. Sato. When do you folks need a decision?
Yeah, so I can talk a little bit about the process. So this is our first time coming to the community. So you guys are the first outreach that we have. We need to work on our application, submit it to the city. It's a long review process at the city. It starts at the Department of Planning and Permitting. It goes to the Planning Commission where they'll have a public hearing. Members of the community, of course, can attend the public hearing there. And then it ultimately goes to City Council for a bill. And as you know, bills are at least three readings, right? Two committee hearings. So it is a long process, could be anywhere between nine months and two years to get through the process.
Yeah, the reason I asked my follow-up, Madam Chair, is, you know, there was a lot of plans in the past which took to get the zoning up to 350. Now you want to revert back to 150. So I think the advantage is for the Y is to get it ready so that you could make it lucrative to sell to a developer. But that does, then that would have another consequence, that they'll come back, the developer, asks to rezone because they bought it at cheap. And then they want to go and then ask for an exception or the variance for affordable housing, which is really not. And so the concern is the Y, you know, provides, you know, very beneficial, you know, over the years. And it's good for the community and it's been there for a while. Also, the Y WCA, same thing. And so by making this rezone, yeah, it might benefit for the Y temporarily, but it really now exacerbate the issue because the unintended consequences is for the board in the future and the City Council to look at the rezoning again or an exception to raise it up for affordable housing, which is not. So it's kind of a catch-22, maybe it's not the right term, but it's kind of in a quagmire. And so I think I understand the need without looking at all of the details, but to go from the current zoning, which they worked really hard to get to the zoning, as it was currently 150, now it's 350, now to go back to 150. Question really is, can the Y, why is the Y selling or looking to sell? Is there something that they can do to refurbish interior to keep it operational? Because it's beneficial for the people that use the Y and its affordability. And that's something that should be considered first if we're going to look at reverting the zone from 350 back to 150. Because we don't want to displace the individuals that's currently there and also future residents that come and go to use the Y in order to benefit of the amenities that's there. And it's been there, what'd you say, 1860s? And we want to keep it there even longer.
Thank you, member Mariano, for that question. Yeah, the Y has been in Hawaii from the 1860s. This location is from the 1950s there. And, you know, that being said, the Y has really been working in the community, you know, over all these years. I mean, that's already, 50s sounds, I mean, seven years already. 74 years of them providing transitional housing to the community there. I think at this point, it's not feasible to continue to maintain. I mean, as you've seen, the Y has been closed there for many years. And Greg can attest, they've gone many routes of trying to figure out what to do, what they can best use in this site. And the strategy that the team has come up with is that selling, moving on with the housing is really the best path forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sato. Two more from the board, member Vandabrink and then Secretary Davis.
I actually had an additional thing I wanted to bring up. I did read up on this before the meeting and it's my understanding that in the last, I think, year or so, the rent at the rooms there for rent was actually subsidized and that actually stopped within the last year. And the state actually had to come in and in fact subsidize some of the rent for the individuals and pay back the late rent from when it actually increased from like $300 to $1,500. Do I have that accurate?
So what had happened is we'd had some arrangements with different organizations to provide subsidies for residents for those to live there who couldn't afford. Those arrangements had gone away years ago. And so we'd been subsidizing certain long-term residents for about five, six years, charging $300 a month. We can't continue to operate this facility charging $300 a month. So we gave them appropriate notice that there was some complaints. The state stepped in on their own volition and said, let's provide a few months of transition for them, which they did. And so we've helped transition all of those residents to other units, other situations. And so that situation is fulminated.
Okay, that's good to hear. Because I know there seems to be a push to try and maintain the Y there as it is, but it just seems completely financially unable to continue in its current capacity. And so you do have to rezone it to sell it because if you don't, then it's essentially going to have to shut down as is. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Sure, I did earlier. Greg Wyble, I'm the CEO of the YMCA. Sure. WAI, Biazin Boy, E.L., Wyble.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. All right, so he's the CEO of the YMCA.
CEO.
Yes. And then we'll call on you soon if you want to talk. We'll do one more of the members and then community members. Typically, we have community concerns, under-community concerns. But tonight, because there have been issues that can be answered by the people presenting, we'll have you come up if you have a comment on this particular matter. Thank you. Secretary Davis. Have her go and then we'll have you come up.
No, I'm just kind of putting it together. Thanks for all the information. And I think, you know, I'm trying to think about long-term and how do we move forward without this becoming a larger issue or a larger concern? Sounds like right now, the YMCA is sinking money into something that you now can't put positive community, you know, effort, that same money towards positive community efforts. And not being able to sell it is going to leave us with something, you know, I think is going to just extend the timeline in which we see something positive come out of it. And I think, you know, for that kind of scenario, that's kind of the, along the lines of what I'm thinking and making it make sense to rezone it. But also for the state and city to think about the loss of transitional housing and what a development like that in the future should still be required to have or when those plans come up. Again, those plans and the approval of those are separate from the YMCA's ability to sell it. And I think that helps us move forward.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. Community members, do you have any comments? Did you? Okay, ma'am, if you could come up and introduce yourself on the mic. And Ms. Gomzer, we could help her with the mic, please.
My name is Grace Lan. I live right next to YMCA. I swam in the pool and I did hula dancing in the rec room and I used a gym. So it was very, very convenient before they shut it all down. I'm very relieved that you're not going to build a high-rise, okay? But I want to know, what is the height right now? I didn't get it.
The current building is five stories, so it's about 50 feet or 50 to 60 feet.
Total?
Currently, yes.
So you can increase, you can double it easily. So are you going to build on top? No, they're just going to sell, okay? Okay, well, I wanted you guys, have you ever been to the Y? Okay, right now, they really painted the nice mural around the swimming pool in the front. It's very, very pleasant. So I was very concerned that it would be built another high-rise. Haven't, we've got enough high-rises, you know, in the Kaka Akko area. 95% of them are not affordable, okay? 50% of them are empty. So if we're going to do any more development here, we have a water issue. Someone talked about it. We have a sewage issue and the worst yet, a traffic issue. So I hope the Y will leave it alone as is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment this evening. Any other community members? Mr. Gishen, if you could reintroduce yourself and then Sir, if you could come after him.
James Gishen, Sugar Sugar Hawaii. Just a quick question. Is this a matter of not being able to sell it or not being able to sell it for a reasonable amount? Because I think, I mean, put it for a dollar, people buy. Just joking, but you know what I'm saying? What's the variation between that? Like if you don't rezone, what can we basically expect and make you do?
So thank you for that question. For the price difference there, I just wanted to note that, you know, the Y is still going to be in Hawaii. Yeah, we have the Nuiwana Y, the Kamukui Y, Middle Islandi Y. So the proceeds from the sales are going to be able to be used in other, you know, YMCA facilities there. So there is a difference in price, but we're not going to share it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gishen. Any other community members? Sir, if you can go up to the mic and introduce yourself. You're welcome. And as mentioned earlier, three-minute time limit for community concerns.
Okay, again, my name is Ian Washburn. I live at 419 Atkinson, which our lanai overlooks the Y. And, you know, there's different ways to tell a lie. And there's lies of commission and there's lies of omission. And I don't want to get into a real, you know, head-to-head with the Y. My first question is, back in 2012, when I was around and were you?
Sorry, sir, can you step closer to the mics so the people on mic can hear?
Sorry, were you around in 2012, Greg? Okay. Yeah, so the question, the issue is, first of all, let's establish the fact that the Y, none of the facilities have been operational since 2013. That's 12 years. So it's not a question of maintaining services or anything like that. There have been no services for 12 years. And those of us that, you know, you got over 2,000 owners, if you include the condominium owners of the Alamoana Hotel within 300 feet of this place. So anyway, we're looking and watching this thing basically rot away. No maintenance, just deferred, things are literally rotting away. I mean, you got roof surfaces held down by concrete cinder blocks for over 10 years, et cetera, et cetera. But I have one question for the Y. And that is, in 2012, and I'm sorry, 2013 and in today, why has the Y not attempted to engage the people that live within 300 feet of the site? I don't remember any solicitation in the mail or email or carrier pigeon, whatever, that said, hey, we want to sell this property. Anybody got any ideas? I mean, we'd like some, because, you know, part of your mission statement at the Y, if you read it carefully, says, we are dedicated to strengthening our communities, that we are, want to do the right thing for the community. But you don't talk to the community. And of course, I don't mean you personally, Greg. I just mean the Y itself, okay? And I have no idea why that is. So I would like to ask that as a fundamental question. Why not engage? You've got a lot of retired lawyers and everything you can think of in these towers. You know, Yard Harbor Towers. You have ladies like this nice lady here that has a lot of good ideas. Leave it the way it is, but the way it is, I'm sorry to say, it's just rotting away. Okay, except for the residential part. So anyway, I know I have a limited time here, but please, I don't know, can people grant me time? Can my partner grant me three minutes? You can't do that. Okay, anyway, so that's my big question is, and it's obviously a loaded question. I'm begging, you know, on my knees, as someone that has lived with this monstrosity, because that's what it looks like from my point of view for 15 years, really, please try to engage the community. I took it upon myself in 2013 and I'm taking it upon myself now to alert, you know, the people within 300 feet. And it's an unbelievable amount of people. I mean, it's really quite incredible. And anyway, there's a number of, you know, ideas that people are allowing to proceed here. And I don't want to go, I don't have time to go through all of them, obviously. But we're trying, you know, a false image is being placed here that this is somehow, you know, to get a zone change, I believe by law, it has to be proven that it's some benefit to the community, right? Now, what is the real reason that they want this zone change? Let's be honest. They want to sell the property. They've been trying to sell it for 30 years, okay? And every 10 years or so, they come up with another, if you'll excuse me, nothing personal, but another harebrained scheme. And never, as far as I know, engaging the community. Now, I mean, I'm imagining anything from a small park there to, I don't know, we don't want to see this thing just sit there and rot. We would like to generate ideas. We don't necessarily have ideas and all the neighbors are not unified as one block of thinking. You know, there's a lot of, and there's probably even people that say, would say, fine, give them the zone change, who cares? But anyway, we want to know what's going to happen. I could spit from my lanai and hit your property. That's how close I am. Anyway, and just specifically, listen, a financial reason, those of you that are acquainted with zoning laws, a financial reason is not a valid reason to ask for a zone change. You can't just say, well, I want a zone change so I can sell my property. It's, I'm sorry, I'm no lawyer, okay? But I really believe that that is written into the text of the law. You know, you can't change just because, you know, it's going to get money in someone's pocket. All right, so I don't know. And I'm glad you brought up the pedestrian, somebody brought up the pedestrian easement. And that is a pedestrian easement. If you look on the maps, it's, I think, five or six feet wide and it's supposed to go from Atkinson to the L O Y walkway, you know, along the canal. Now, our neighbor has put up a big gate there. And you guys routinely have vehicles parked there and so forth and so on. It's not maintained. People can't go to the, we used to be able to walk out our door and walk to the L O Y Canal, which is one of the most beautiful places in Honolulu, right in back of the convention center. We haven't been able to do that for years. They've put a sign up on their, well, that's another issue. But anyway, I'm not even for or against the zone change necessarily. I just feel like there's a, this is top-down, monolithic, we have the power, you're only the neighbors, what do we care? It's, why should we consult you, you know? So I really hope that, you know, because if you don't, you're going to have the same. Look, we lost the battle in 2013. They got their zone change.
Mr. Washburn, if you could wrap it up.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. Just another 20 minutes. No, just kidding, just kidding. But, you know, I mean, if you're going to come at us like out of the blue and not even... But, you know, I mean, if you're going to come at us like out of the blue and not engage us as friends, then you will engage us as adversaries. And we lost that battle. But I don't see a tower there, do you? And that's because every diligent person that tries to buy that property goes to DPP and looks at the paperwork and sees a stack of over 200 written oppositions to that zone change back then. So it's a hostile environment for any potential builder. And there's other issues of subsidence because it's built on crushed coral. You start, you crack one of our foundations and the company is going to go bankrupt. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Washburn. Okay, any other comments from the community? Okay, thank you, folks, for coming out to, oh. Second Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you for your heartfelt information. I would like to propose that the city might consider purchasing it for low-income, affordable housing. It's in a great area that needs housing, just in Waikiki or adjacent to Waikiki, I should say. And, you know, just take the property, buy it and restructure it, not necessarily 150 feet, because I don't think that's what people want from 10 years ago and today. But you can sure make a nice little apartment building for people who have below the AMI and move forward in that way and provide housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, for that discussion regarding this agenda item. We are now moving on to the Division of Urban Forestry. Do we have Ms. Roxanne Adams online? Oh, thank you for being here in person. So just give us a brief description of what the division does. And again, this is more questions for you since it came up from one of our board members.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Adams. I'm the administrator for the Department of, Division of Urban Forestry. Urban Forestry basically maintains all your city street and park trees, along with our Botanic Gardens.
Thank you. I know some of our board members are very passionate about trees in the area. So we'll start with Member Vanderbrink.
Thank you, Chair. So Ms. Adams, so I know I had some questions regarding the trees that I kind of pestered Mr. Sullivan on, Ben over there, about. So I just want to kind of ask you some questions in reference to the trees in the downtown area. My first one for Keo'moku, the tree on the corner, on the corner of Keo'moku and Kapuolani fell-
1440 Kapuolani.
1440. It did fall a few months ago. I know there is kind of just an issue where I was trying to find out who was responsible for the tree because it did overlook the sidewalk and the road. And I only found out last month that it was actually privately maintained. So in reference to community members, if they want to find out if a tree is privately maintained or maintained by DUF, I'm not sure if you prefer that acronym or the Division of Urban Forestry, how would community members find that out?
So at present, we're in the process of completing, complete inventory of all of our street and park trees. Once that is completed, there will be an ability for the public to go in and view some of the specifics on each of the city-owned trees. But at this point, we're not there.
Madam Chair, this sidebar conversation is very disruptive. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mariano. And Mr. Washburn, if you could, please keep your comments until the end of the meeting, just so we could focus on the presenters and board members and community members who have questions for Ms. Adams. Thank you, Member Mariano.
Thank you, Chair. So I like your mention, you're stop piling the inventory tree so we can actually view it from an online capacity. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. For a geographical perspective, is there any way we can tell just by kind of looking at where the tree is, if it's in fact maintained by the division or if it's privately owned? Like, I assume the ones in the middle of the road are maintained by the Division of Urban Forestry, but the ones on the sidewalk are, can we just say they're maintained by you or?
So usually, it's the sidewalk strip that's closest to the curb or where the city trees are. But that's not always the case in all subdivisions. So it really depends. But you can call us.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's good to hear. I was just wondering if that's a firm thing or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to also talk about that tree at 1440 Kapuolani, you guys were the ones that ended up removing it, is that correct?
Yes, it's part of our function in any emergency to be able to clear any city street.
Okay, and the property owner didn't reimburse you for any of that removal?
No.
No, okay. I noticed too that the other trees along that strip are also removed. Was that also done by you guys or is that by the, that was by the private developer? Gotcha. And in reference to the tree that did fall there, are you able to say that was a completely weather-related event? Or was that due to any sort of maintenance issue on the tree from what you're able to obtain?
So from what we can tell, the roots of the tree, if you saw it, the roots of the tree were not well-established. But the top was very large. So that difference in ratio probably exacerbated the tree falling over.
Okay, so it sounds like it was a maintenance issue and an installation issue by the property developers that caused the tree to be unsafe to the general area? Am I correct in that understanding?
I can't quantify or qualify that at this time. But if you look at the roots and you look at the top, you can see that the ratio is off.
Okay. I think that does just bring concerns for me about other privately-held trees in the area, especially since we can't tell if they're maintained by your division or if they're privately maintained. I did reach out to Councilmember Nishimoto's office to actually find out about if there's any city laws in reference to maintaining the trees in the downtown area. And I heard back from his office that, sorry about that. But I did hear from Councilmember Nishimoto's office that there's no specific law requiring private properties to maintain their trees. But if it does end up injuring anyone, it can become a tort issue. So for my concern, I am just kind of worried that private owners of large trees in the downtown area might not maintain them or might not install them properly. They could pose a threat to the public walking on sidewalk or even the cars on the road. And there's really no way to force the private developer to maintain that tree properly until it injures someone. I'm not, that wasn't really a question, but if you have any comments on it, happy to. I do have others, I can pass it along. Yep, I'll pass it along.
Adams, do you have any comments on what Member Vanderbrink had brought up? Not at this time. Member Chang.
Yeah, I'm the tree guy on the board. Yeah, usually, usually the trees that I deal with, Ben is usually the guy that I have to deal with. Occasionally, I've seen your department come and clear off streets where big trees have fallen, whether they're city, state, or private. So I think you guys do a great job. The issues with respect to private properties, a lot of times, from what I've experienced, because I have a property where we've got these gigantic monkeypods. And they were there for decades. So they're well-established old trees. And it takes quite a bit of money to maintain them. All I could offer is, it's a good idea every so many years to get an arborist to come and take a look at the healthier tree. That's what we do. And it's mainly because where those trees are, it used to be a park. And it was developed. And it actually is in the controlling documents that it has to be maintained as a park for certain areas of it. So, yeah, it's incumbent on the private owners to check on the health of the trees. So, but thank you for what you do. I think, I haven't seen a situation where you guys have not responded. In fact, you even respond in emergencies when they do occur. So good on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Chang. Member Mariano.
Yes, thank you for, thank you for coming. You know, the care of the trees, particularly along Kapuolani Boulevard and Alamoana Boulevard, is kind of important because it's part of the historic aspect. Particularly in the Alamoana Kakaako area, when developers came and did their presentation, you know, one of the things they said that if they were to remove a tree, they would put it back after construction. And in some cases, it's not happened. So you could see that there's a, there's a gap in some of those things. And I agree with my colleague, Member Chang here. You know, over the years, the trees that's on the sidewalk, you know, it's a combination of working with your department and publicly, Department of Transportation, whoever maintains the sidewalk, you know, after a while, after many years, the roots, you know, is above, and so they can go in and either cut the root out or do some type of maintenance, do either replant it or repurpose it or something. But I'm sure you folks, your folks are the expert to kind of do that. And that should save the value of the tree and also what it provides. I remember many years ago, always driving through Kapuolani Boulevard and looking at the coverage of the tree. You know, it had served a purpose, you know, cover, protection for pedestrians, rain, and so on and so forth. But for us now, is that there is something can your office do to work with the Department of Transportation or whoever maintains the sidewalks and the roads to ensure that the arborists can not only keep the tree healthy, but to maintain it? And on Alamoana Boulevard, because it's so hot, the sprinkler system at one point was broken. And it needs to be looked at on a continued basis to keep the trees healthy.
Yes, we do work interdepartmentally to maintain the sidewalks and the roads. So we work with DPP and DFM to work together in cooperation to repair any sidewalks or roads to maintain the trees. In some areas, like Alamoana Boulevard, some of those media strips actually belong to the state. So we work with them as well to make sure that the trees are being maintained and they're provided with the required care.
Okay, thank you, Member Mariano. We'll go back, wrap it up with Member Vanderbrink for the remaining questions.
Thank you so much. And again, I'm really happy that you're here to address our questions. And as long as with the division as well. I have no complaints from them. If you notice, my questions are based on what private property owners are doing with their trees. So that is from my concern. In addition, the Kalakala Homes, they had a tree also falling down a few months ago as well that actually crushed a handy van. That is on the public housing land, so you guys have no oversight of it as well. But because that tree fell and did crush a handy van there, did anyone from your division go to inspect the other trees in the area to make sure they weren't a danger for the residents?
We did not inspect the private property trees, but we did look at the city-owned trees.
So you looked at the trees out in general, but not the ones in that area?
Not on the private property.
Okay. So is there any reason why you would go onto a private property to inspect these large trees if they might pose a danger to the residents there?
The only time we go on private property to inspect trees is through our exceptional tree program.
And how does that work?
So if a private property owner would like their tree to be exceptional, and they get, I believe it's a tax credit, every other year, we then would go on the property to inspect the tree to see if it meets the exceptional tree criteria, one of which is that it's safe. That's really the only time that we do go onto private property to look at trees.
Okay. And for Kalakala Homes there, that's public housing land. So would that qualify, given that it's maintained by, it's public housing land and not necessarily a fully private developer that owns the land?
It would be dependent upon who the property owner is. So if that's a city property, I would have to go back because DUF doesn't maintain that property to see who actually maintains that property. But if it's a state property, it's up to the state.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to ask if there are trees that the public might have concerns about, either because of like the roots or the branches, the tree might be listing in an urgent and non-urgent situation, how would we go about contacting you to let you know about the trees?
On public property, you can reach out to us at duf@honolulu.gov. You can also call in at 808-971-7151. 311 is also an opportunity, although 311 won't always get you as quick a result just because it goes, has to go through the steps. So if it is an emergency, you can also call 911 and HPD will get in touch with us.
And that is for city-owned trees. But if it's a privately-owned tree that has significant oversight of public walkways or streets like the one on Kapuolani, would that also be one that you guys could inspect and look at?
We don't inspect private trees.
Okay. I just think there's kind of a loophole there that the one on Kapuolani, if someone did call with concerns about it, like the roots, for example, because that's not in your oversight, no one would be able to go out and inspect it. And as a result, it could, like it did, it fell down. So I don't know if anyone called with concerns about that. It just seems to be a loophole there that might need to be addressed at the city council or legislative level.
As far as I know, we've never received any inquiries about the tree at 1440 Kapuolani.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Back to the Chair.
Could I just kind of, I guess I have more experience on this than most other people. Usually what happens is, tree root starts breaking up the sidewalk. Call the city. City's going to take a look at it and determine if it's a city tree, the city's going to fix it. If it's a private that broke the sidewalk, guess what? The private person is going to end up fixing the sidewalk. So I know this for a fact because I've had to replace three corners where the trees are. So the association had to pay for the repair of the sidewalks that the trees that were on private property damaged. But the ones where the city trees are, city fixes it, which is nice. So I have not had any experience when a state has to go fix something. Because usually the ones that the state controls is right in the middle of like Alamoana Boulevard or something along that line where it's a, it's like by a highway or something along that. And I haven't had that experience. But from my experience, that's typically what I usually deal with. So thank you again for your presentation and your answers.
If you do put in a sidewalk uplift and the tree is a private tree, we send it back to DPP and DPP will contact the private property owner to take care of the issues.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Roxanne Adams, for being here to answer our questions. And thank you to Mr. Ben Sullivan from the mayor's office as well for reaching out to the division in order for you to be here today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if the board will indulge me in taking the agenda out of order, since we do have a minor that needs to get home, but we can get Representative Kim Koko-Yuomo, and we thank you for being here in person this evening.
Thank you very much. With opportunity to give you a brief update, I did hear, so one of the things I found out recently was that trees that fall, for whatever reason, sometimes they end up at reuse Hawaii. And they're, I've seen the tree laid out and they're cut like four inches thick or something. And because apparently the rough-hewn edges are very valuable. So it looks like the trees are being used, if anybody cares about that. And then we heard a presentation on Follow the Flow or the Drip. And he mentioned about eight-week cleanup should be supported. And they were one of the grantee recipients. As you may know, the legislature does allocate $50 million of taxpayer money to different nonprofit organizations, and actually, across the- nonprofit organizations, and actually, across the state. And as you know, there's 51 districts. So 808 cleanup did receive a small grant, so I just wanted to make that connection. So there's $50 million allocated this past legislative session. You know, we have 51 state rep districts. Our district, District 25, in terms of how many nonprofit organizations are cited in our district that got funding, actually, our district got $3.5 million in taxpayer-funded grant and aid awards, both operational grants and capital improvement grants. So this includes, so for capital improvement and includes this structure here, they got money to help repair their roof, as well as Inspiration Hawaii Museum, the Episcopal Church in Hawaii, the Boys and Girls Club of Hawaii, and then Gregory House has a residence, it's for people living with HIV. And they have a residence on Young Street called Joey's Place, and that also receives some grant and aid. And then that, so that's capital improvement funding for grant and aid. We also got operational funding for Hawaii Farm Bureau Foundation, the Legal Clinic, Oceanate Research Foundation, YWCA Oahu, After School All-Stars, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction, Hawaii Tax Help and Financial Empowerment Solutions. Another thing I want to share with you is that IHS, I don't know, I think you might have heard me explain in the past that there are homeless services providers that are contracted across the state, and that our district is divided right down on PEKoi. So on once Makai of, or Eva of PEKoi, it used to be IHS, and I think, or Eva of PEKoi used to be Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction. And then Diamond Head of PEKoi, it was IHS. But now IHS will be taking over the whole area. So if you call that number, and I did speak with Connie Mitchell just today, I said, so I'm just making sure that if people call the number to, because they're concerned about one of our unsheltered neighbors on a specific corner, a specific sidewalk, if you, you can actually take a picture, if you're comfortable with that, and send the picture to the phone number and then say, you know, can you, do you mind checking on this individual? So Connie did confirm that somebody will check on that person within 24 hours. Two people will go in person, and they will let the person know where there are vacant beds and offer to give them a ride. They may refuse, and if they do refuse, they'll check again the next day. So they'll maintain that relationship. So I just wanted to make sure you guys know about that update. The number, you know, somebody left a sheet out on the desk out there with all of the homeless services. I believe it's there, but yeah, I, one second, let me look. I feel like I've given it out many times. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, Board?
About anything, like things you're reading about the legislature?
No questions. Thank you, Representative Iomoto.
Thank you guys so much for letting me.
Of course. Absolutely. Okay. Let's move back to Board Business. 4.1, it is now 7:56, so let's get through this. Approval of the April 22nd, 2025 meeting minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, edits? Member Freneas?
Hi. There's a, there needs to be a correction under the heading of, excuse me, the official section eight, in terms of the reinstallation of crosswalk traffic signal light that I raised earlier. It's under Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's district. It states here, "Traffic light installation on South King Street and Hale Makai Street." No such animal. The correct location is South King Street and Keala Makai Street.
Okay. Thank you, Member Freneas. Any other agenda items, edits from last month?
Move to accept as amended.
Okay. Seconded. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you, Board members. Meeting minutes for April 22nd have been approved. Board member absences, I wanted to bring this up just because we do have some members that have been absent for more than two or three times. We are coming in through a new cycle, so we're not going to have any action on this. But just as a heads up, if you, if anyone does feel like they are unable to fulfill the commitments of being on the board and showing up in person or online, just let us know, just so we can continue and have that board position filled. So thank you, Board members, for your patience and for all of you for showing up. Attendance at other meetings. Does anyone want to report on any attendance that they've had? Okay. 4.4, Action Committee Report with our Action Committee Chair, Secretary Emma Davis.
I will try and keep it super short. Just some updates, continuing on working on a couple of projects, one being surveying the community about just both the parks department plan for dog-friendly parks within the neighborhood, as well as future potential plans for Alamoana Beach Park or Regional Park. We've made a survey, little things, it's more the distribution plan that now kind of needs to take effect. So working on that slash may need to partner and/or hand that off as I will have to hand off my Action Committee responsibilities. And on top of that, we were working on producing a newsletter, just informing more people about the existence of neighborhood boards and its impact on ground-up governance and how that helps, again, our state senators, council members, et cetera, if we really encourage people to participate in it. So happy to continue working with whoever wants to hopefully pick that up and continue on with it. And I'll continue to just check in with you guys and get the details on what's going on. But it's been a pleasure doing the Action Committee, and I really feel like we've made some moves in some things and still some things to carry forward that I think can be really helpful. So looking to someone to pick up that lead and run with it. But thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Member Davis. Questions for Member Davis, Board? What? Okay. So when would be your last meeting? Oh, this is you. Well, we still have one meeting in June, so this is a...
I'm pursuing a MBA program, but I'll be doing it in Milan, Italy. So, yeah, not a bad, a bad place to be. I'm excited. And everyone's welcome to visit.
Thank you, Member Davis, for your service. If you are able to attend the last one in June, that would be great. If not, we completely understand. So. Thank you, Member Davis, for that report. Moving on to item 4.5, DPR had sent a letter regarding dog parks and would like board feedback by August 29th. Checking with the board if you all received that letter. Go ahead, Member Davis.
Whoever is carrying it on, this is what we've made, just as a distribution plan with a QR code and a link and everything. But I'm just, I know Jeanne printed out one for me, but if we were to do this, I might encourage someone to think about when the date for response is you'd want to buy. Right now, it says June 17th, but given that the letter says later, we could probably extend the amount of time that input is collected on this to make sure that people have time to provide it. Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments regarding the letter that Director Thielen had sent to the board? Second vice chair Rice.
Thank you. So Member Davis and I got together and talked about what we can do because Director Thielen from Department of Parks and Rec asked for feedback from, asked us, the Neighborhood Board, us, to survey the community. So, and get feedback, you know, about where dogs should be, how do you feel about dogs? How do you not feel about dogs? And I think one of the things that we're going to do, at least I know I will, because she's going to Italy, is just sit in my neighborhood, especially when Kualua Dog Park reopens, and pass these little guys out and people can scan it. That way, we'll get greater response from the community. As everyone, I think, knows, I walk my dog every morning for two, two and a half hours, and I bump into all kinds of people, Mr. Nishimoto. And I'd be happy to walk around handing these things out, because everyone comes up to me this time. I'll go up to them and say, "We need your help," or "We need your thoughts and ideas and input." Is a great way. I can also sit in front of Nordstrom's Rack at South Shore Market. So there's lots of places to go, all the restaurants in the Ward Village area that welcome dogs. I'm going to make a bunch of those and hand them out and have their staff hand it to guests who are dining and ask them to complete it as well. So there's lots of ways to gather information to provide to Director Thielen. Anyone wants to join me in the fun and sit at a table in Ward Village on a Saturday for a couple of hours and a Sunday, please let me know. I think it's really nice. The other thing that was part of that was to engage the community as to what the Neighborhood Board is all about and try to, I was really excited today when I came in and saw all these people in the audience. And, but obviously, they're here for a reason, but it'd be really great to get people to come just to learn what's going on here. I don't, it amazes me how people said to me in the last month or so, "I voted for you." And I said, "What did you vote for? Do you even understand what the Neighborhood Board is all about?" And they really don't. So it's a great opportunity for us to communicate to our neighbors and friends and strangers, you know, just what the Neighborhood Board is all about and how they might wish to get involved and participate. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Davis, Member Chang.
Just on that note, and Dyson checked it for me, I do need to fix the QR code. So if you have this version, don't do anything with it, I'll send you a new one. But there is a tiny URL that works no matter what, honeyirl.com/hnlnb11dogs, to keep it simple. But that, the survey is up and running, it works, the QR code I need to fix. But does anybody have any thoughts on when the board would want people to fill this out by, so I can update these for distribution? The end of June?
Gives us, end of June. I think it gives us a full month to reach out to the community and have some fun with those that are interested.
I'll make this mention again. I think we should probably keep a database of some of the bigger condos, and usually they have some sort of manager or management company, and then send it to them to get that kind of input. Because that way, you make a few calls or a few emails, and you can get a lot of responses. So that's my recommendation.
Member Mariano?
Yeah, just another recommendation. You know, Representative Kim Koko does an excellent job in sending out surveys once in a while. We have some elected officials that represent this board. They send out a plethora of things, and it's free for them. So, you know, we might suggest that we send this to them to add it to their newsletter on their website, so we can get the word out. Because the advantage of that is Representative Kim Koko, you know, had the most responses to the surveys that she puts out. And if that's one of the things that we're trying to do, we should try to leverage through the Neighborhood Council to give it to elected officials to add this to their newsletter that they go out, because they're sending it out anyway, and it's part of their constituents.
Member Davis?
I'm just going to kind of hand it over to Jeanne, though. But that was kind of our, these were more, you know, for handing out as you're passing people, or like if anybody's going to the farmer's market, et cetera, a quick way to engage people. But also, Jeanne has been making, you know, quite an effort to contact condominium GMs, and I think sharing it with representatives, kind of, again, low floor, high ceiling of a way for us to get it out for little money and build from there. You know, just start, again, surveying and getting good input from our community members in a larger quantity.
Thank you, Member Davis. The time is now 8:07. Let's continue to move on as much as possible. We try to keep these meetings 2.5, two, 2.5 hours. Item 4.6, Consideration of Resolution Regarding the Vandalism of Kualua Dog Park. We'll have Member Dale Vanderbrink go over the resolution that he has drafted. And Member Vanderbrink, if you can read it as well for our community members?
Of course. So there was a copy posted on the Google Doc for everyone to view online, and we as well have copies here in person on the board. So this is Resolution Regarding the Vandalism of Kualua Dog Park. Since the Kualua Dog Park opened on February 8th, it has experienced several instances of vandalism that have targeted the gate fence, sprinkler heads, and sprinkler control, whereas the acts of vandalism are forcing the park to close from May 12th to June 9th with the estimated repair cost of $20,000. Multiple other instances of vandalism have affected the island recently, including two but not limited to the Wahihua Playground on May 1st, was severely burned with damages estimated to be $120,000. A cell tower on the Windward Oahu on May 10th had wires damaged, knocking out cell servers for many Windward residents. A Moat Eili Eili Japanese cemetery for several days in April saw headstones and monuments desecrated and earned stole. Whereas the City Council is considering Resolution 25128, that would span surveillance at city parks to deter criminal activity. And just a slight asterisk with that, that's not specific to the Kualua Dog Park, that's just in general for city parks. Let it be resolved that the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board condemns these acts of vandalism and respectfully requests the following actions from our elected officials in law enforcement. Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam and Councilmember Scott Nishimoto, for the City Council to form a subcommittee or a related panel to hear if changes are needed to current vandalism-related laws, both in the form of deter, punishment, and prosecution. Honolulu Police Department, additional patrols and police presence at the Kualua Dog Park can be made during the overnight hours when the park reopens in June to deter further acts of vandalism. Honolulu Police Department Liaison to the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board, currently errant, to provide updates on the Kualua Dog Park vandalism investigation until such time as those responsible are apprehended, apprehended, or the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board no longer requests these updates. The Hawaii Community Development Authority, if additional security measures can be taken to secure items of value in the park during these overnight hours. Be it further resolved, the copies of the signed resolution to be sent to the Honolulu City Council members, Honolulu Police Department, and the Hawaii Community Development Authority. That's the end of the resolution. I can also just add from my own personal writing of this, I tried to keep it non-controversial, kind of straightforward, and just asking for more action from our City Council members, HPD, as well as Hawaii Community Development Authority, just to ensure that this doesn't happen again, and to try and prevent further actions of vandalism, not just at the dog park, but in other city areas and businesses as well. Any questions from other members of the board? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Member Vanderbrink. Questions from the board? Member Mariano?
Yeah, I think this is a good, it's written pretty well, and I think it hits the intent. I would just, would like to add, you know, that the Park and Recreation, because it's their property, and also consider State Senator Sharon Morawaki, you know, from the state side. Because with anything else, when the city, you know, does their ordinance, you know, it has some funding associated with that. And this is all across Oahu, so it will have other impacts to other neighborhood boards in their communities as well, so they can use this as such. And so this is a bigger issue than just Kualua Dog Park. So I would just say, if we were to look at adopting this, that we just consider adding State Senator Morawaki, because she's very, and she's involved with the dog park as well, but also Ms. Thielen from the Park and Recreation. but also Ms. Thielen from the Park and Recreation. Yeah, but still, she should be included.
Thank you. Any other board members? Second Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you. And also, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, and I don't know if everyone gets this or not, the Honolulu Records Collection. There was an agenda item last week about a donation to the Wahihua Playground, and someone donated the money to refurbish it after the fire, which I thought was a big wow. I thought that was really cool. So maybe we can find other angels to come and support these kinds of initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Second Vice Chair Rice. Any other board comments? Okay, if we can add the edits that people had suggested, and I think some non-substantive, like grammar. Yes. But does the board feel ready to pass this? And there's also a note from Robin Henske of Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam's office regarding the third reading of the budget bills on June 4th. Okay, June 4th is the date for the third reading of the fiscal year 26 budget bills. During today's Budget Committee meeting, members deliberated and discussed Bill 60, which relates to sewer fees. Apologies, I thought that was like the dog park. Okay, sorry, apologies. Does the board feel comfortable voting on this with the suggested edits? And then, Member Vanderbrink can give us a final version of it. I do, if the board feels comfortable voting on this.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt this resolution with the changes and the edits, that we see it, you know, the final product, and submit it for record.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Member Davis?
Second.
Can I just confirm the edits would be adding Senator Morawaki Leland from the Department of Parks and Recreation and to just, Thielen.
Yeah, yeah.
And to update, just to edit any grammatical, non-substant changes. Just those three.
If we are adding our, or senators should we also add, or representatives? You add both the, both legislators, Senate and House.
All our elected officials, I can add them.
Yes. Any other comments, board? Yeah, I think we're good. Yeah. Go ahead, please. Could you restate the motion with the other addition?
Move that we adopt the Resolution Regarding the Vandalism of Koloalua Dog Park, with subject to the changes of adding our State Senator Sharon Morawaki or two representatives, and also the Ms. Thielen from the city, from the State Department of Park and Recreation. And the city.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion to vote on this, this is a motion to vote. Okay. Anyone, all in favor, say hi. Okay, I see Member Feinger giving a thumbs up online as well. Anyone oppose? Okay, Member Vanderbrink, it looks like we'll have you edit this resolution, and we can get it turned to City Council as soon as possible. Camille, thank you, Ms. Gomes. Okay, the time is now 8:16. Subdistrict reports with, again, Member Dale Vanderbrink.
I'll make this quick. The old Ross Building currently across from Walmart. I'm happy to report that I did speak to the Commercial Realtor, who actually can report that a new owner has, in fact, agreed to the lease there, and they're currently drawing up the paperwork. So until the paperwork is finalized, it can't be made public who, in fact, is taking over the lease. But glad to hear that the lease is being taken over, so the graffiti on that can be removed and the building reopened as a new business to better serve the community. That's all I have to report, Chair.
Thank you, Member Vanderbrink. Any other board members reporting for the subdistricts? Member Chang?
Okay, regarding that power out, power shutdown on Leona Street affecting those condos. I don't know, maybe Non was listening. They actually did have Hawaiian Electric come and reroute the power. So they didn't have to shut off the power, although we were all prepared for it. So there were two days that they were gonna shut down the power. So on the first day, they rerouted it. And the second day, they rerouted it. So I want to take back all those nasty things I said about Non. Well, to some extent. Because they actually, I don't know if they were actually listening, or mainly because I complained so much about it. But they did the right thing, which was to make the, make, do the extra effort so that the neighborhood and the community wasn't inconvenienced because of it. So, Non, thank you very much for rerouting the power. The community certainly does appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Chang. Any other board members reporting for the subdistricts? Member Freenas?
Thank you, Chair. Just lightning flash, quickly, the Long's Drugs. For those of you who are not aware yet, or are aware, the Long's Drugs on Halekuila and Ward Avenue is closing down. That's located in the Keikilahana condominium, that floor there. So for a lot of the Kupuna and the broader neighborhood, for your prescriptions, I was told that they will be transferred to the South King Street Longs slash CVS location. So again, June, it's a Thursday, no, excuse me, Tuesday, June 10th, they will be completely closed. Thank you.
Thank you for that, F Y I, Member Freenas. Any other board members? Okay, thank you, board. Moving on to, time is now 8:19. Moving on to residents and community concerns. With Mr. James Gishen of Sugar Sugar Hawaii.
First of all, thank you, board. I really appreciate the efforts that you guys do and with representing the community. And I agree with you that definitely more people need to know. Again, James Gishen, co-founder of Sugar Sugar Hawaii. We're a small business. We operate as essentially a social enterprise, reinvesting the vast majority of our revenue back into the community and through charitable giving. And then you can see that through, you go visit our shop, and you'll see we support small makers, small artisans, and up-and-coming fashion designers. We have over 300 right now. Something that is close to my heart, is one of the initiatives that we're doing, is to create awareness and to address shortcomings or issues in the criminal justice system. So today, I just want to give a very quick overview of that, just for a few minutes. And God willing, be able to give a more comprehensive presentation in a future meeting. First of all, forgive me, I'm not that well spoken. So if I'm rude or belligerent, it just strikes at my heart here. I'm gonna just kind of skip ahead to what the solution is and hopefully have some background on what the problems are together with that. There are issues in our criminal justice system at every level. But that could be said about anything. We can always improve and make progress in anything that we do, including the criminal justice system. The first one that I'd like to address is crime reporting. I think that we hear a lot of people tell us, "Look, the crime statistics show that, you know, it's down, there's less crime." But those are stats, and stats need to be gathered somehow, and that's by reporting. But if the community gives up reporting because they're apathetic, the stats go down, not the crime. The crime is, just walk 10 or 20 minutes, you know, around town, and you'll see the crime. So it's pretty obvious. How do we, how do we deal with that? Well, we reform it. We don't just talk about it. And that's, in the next meeting, I'll be distributing what we, as an organization, are doing. We've streamlined the process for reporting for small businesses. We spearheaded groups across the island of small businesses that gather together and help each other, kind of like a neighborhood board, neighborhood watch, but for businesses. But HPD can do something amazing, too. They can streamline their process. They can make their online portal where we can report everything right on an online portal, so they don't have to send beat cops every time that there's some issue. It can be done very easily, especially with misdemeanors. Where we have a lot of issues is prosecution. We actually have a really good dealings with HPD. And anything can be improved. But with prosecution, we're up against a wall typically. And there's three reforms that we'd like to see. One, in 2023, there was a policy that started, I call it the Call Again Policy, where essentially, they won't prosecute unless you call again their office and say, "We want to prosecute," even though HPD now requires us to write that in our sworn statement on an HPD form because at the behest of the prosecutors. But word for word, we put that in there, and then they still, and this, it's like we magically need to know that we're supposed to call. So literally thousands of cases, you can read the news, thousands of cases just don't even get looked at. And those are the very, very few cases that even make it to prosecutors. That's one issue. Another one is the, there's no deadlines, really. And so like, someone steals a necklace from my shop, like, put him in front of a, if I got all the evidence, it's a clear-cut case, put him in front of the judge the next day, you know, at least within a month, and just handle it. And then pushing for tougher sentences, that's another thing. Sentencing, moving on to that. Sentencing, there's a huge issue with sentencing. Really, the judge gives one of two sentences in our experience. Either one, they kick him back to the streets with little to no accountability. Or two, they send him for a comparatively brief sentence of jail time, where they end up coming out worse than when they went in. That's not restorative, that's not gonna help people, that's just gonna make things worse. Meaningful sentences could give people an option. They have, you know, the judge can say, either you pay, either for a theft report, for example, 15 days of jail time and $500 fine, nobody's gonna choose. Or B, 150 hours of community service and 50 more hours of community service. They learn their lesson, community benefits. So that's another suggestion. I'll just say one more, and then I'll wrap up. There's something else as well, but corrections. This is tied to that last sentencing thing. Corrections, it's a misnomer. We're not really correcting anything. I think we need to look at programs like in New York that are alternative to incarceration programs or AP Alternative Prison programs. We do have something like that with like the Hope Program. That's kind of like just scratching the surface. We can have a lot better ones where we can help people that are struggling with mental health issues that don't really need to be in prison, that are struggling with substance abuse issues that don't need to be in prison. But they do need help. So we can't just be like, "Well, we're just gonna kick you back to the street, too." We need to help them with places like Habilisat, with places, with a program like Drug Treatment as an alternative to prison program that New York has. That's what I got, that's a preview for next time.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Gishen. And he is actually going to come back in a future meeting. Hopefully the next one, if you are available.
Yeah, if you'll invite me.
Because he has actually already created a presentation, but it's much longer. So today, he wanted to give us a preview under community concerns.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it. Looking forward to it. And when you do your presentation, maybe you can just tell us how we can help.
Absolutely, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gishen. Again, board, I'd like to take the agenda out of order, since we did have Representative.
Madam Chair, just a quick comment. You know, so we have an Action Committee. And so your presentations would be good there. And then the Action Committee is also another informal way to talk to the, to the committee. And they can help you, just for example, like the dog park. Come up, you know, with your recommendation for a resolution. Okay, it's not gonna be adopted there, but then the committee presents it to the board, you know, for consideration, just like what we've done. So that's some of the legwork that you can do. So that's an avenue. And you don't have to be a board member to run the committee. And if you have some bright ideas or something, and if the board accepts, you could be a standing member on the committee to help facilitate that type of deal.
It's actually on our agenda minutes for the last one. We didn't quite get to it, but I will make sure that it's on for further conversation on our next Action Committee, which will be June, the 2nd, Thursday in June.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gishen, for being here this evening.
Thank you.
And we do have a question online, is the Action Committee streamed? So Action Committees are run by the board, so we don't have assistance from NCO. But it's a bit more informal. So we do have a Zoom link for it, if people can, if people would like to click on that. So just wanted to answer that question. Moving on, again, I wanted to take the agenda out of order again, board, since we did it for one representative. I'd like to do it for the rest of the officials that are here in person, since you guys have, you guys do show up here, so I'd like to call up. Councilmember Scott Nishimoto, who's been here since before 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It's good to see all of you. In the interest of time, let me just say this is Council Week, Committee Week. So we have committee hearings this week, next week, full council. We'll be taking up the budget in next week's full council meeting. So the following month, I will probably have an update on what was put in the budget. I don't want to jinx the things that I have in it now, since it's not over yet. But there's, you know, some money for dog parks, there's some money for Kakaakua Streets. And, you know, Tyler Dos Santos Tam is the Chair of the Budget Committee. I'm the Vice Chair. So, you know, we're able to advocate for you guys pretty well, I think. But I don't want to jinx it, I'll let you know what's in the budget next month. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Nishimoto. Questions? Member Mariano?
Just real quick, thanks for all what you folks do in the City Council. So may we ask you if you could put our survey on one of your handouts that's going out?
Yeah, so we send, we send an e-blast out every week, every other week, and we can stick it on. If you can just send it to my office, then be happy to do it.
Thank you. And I think that'll apply to any other legislator and council member that comes up.
Madam Chair, although that would be, it would be the proper thing to ask, and that's why I asked the question.
Thank you for asking, Member Mariano. Councilmember Nishimoto, thank you for being here this evening. Oh, one more question from Member Vanderbrink.
Yeah, I'll try to make this fast. But I know Councilmember Nishimoto, I did mention you earlier. So just to explain, I did email your office around six weeks ago just to ask about any laws regarding privately held trees. And I was basically told that there weren't any laws regarding it, that if a tree does fall, it's a tort claim, so they would have to sue. So I don't know if you recognize my email or my name on there.
I did. So almost daily, we go through a spreadsheet of all the constituent stuff that comes in. So my staff and I go through it. I think we asked OCS for the kind of legal opinion on that one, and they, what we sent you is what they told us.
That's appreciated. And I just want to thank you for being here as well. I was watching the City Council meeting earlier today, so I saw you were there from the early morning all the way to now, working for the community. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I do hope the sewer fee, the, I know that was featured prominently in the council meeting this morning. I do hope we can get further updates, especially when time allows, on the proposals during the next meeting on what's happening with the sewer fee.
Yeah, we voted out something today. I, it was a six-year plan. I can give you more of the details next meeting. There are a lot of amendments that were done kind of orally, so I didn't really see them. But we did vote something out today. So it'll probably be on full council on next week.
We look forward to seeing that and hearing it for the next meeting.
But it wasn't the 10-year plan that the administration wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nishimoto, thank you for being here this evening.
Thanks for taking me out of order, appreciate it.
As we continue that pattern that we have, we have Representative Adrian Tam, who's also here in person.
Scott, you're so tall. Thank you so much for having me. So the legislature has adjourned, seen ADA, and we have passed a number of good bills. If you live in Town District 24, you will receive this newsletter, probably today, because like I have, I'm sorry, it's a lot of words, but I promise you, it's very informative. And there are a number of bills that we highlight, including the stabilization of property insurance so that our condominium owners can have some relief, to e-bike regulations, to a bill relating to positions at UH to work on the Alawai Canal to prevent any kind of flooding in the future, and biosecurity. So, you know, it was a very exciting. So, you know, it was a very exciting session, in my opinion, because we've had a lot of good GIA and CIPs delivered for the many community organizations and the public facilities in Waikiki and District 24. And so with that, I can open up to any kind of questions you may have.
Questions, Board? Member Mariano.
Yes, may we ask that you submit our survey on to your newsletter, the next one that comes out?
Sure. You guys can send me the link and I'll.
Thank you, Representative Tam. We appreciate that. Member Van de Brink.
Sorry, again, I know in the interest of time, I'll try and make this fast, but I want to bring up the Convention Center again, since I brought it up about two months ago. It went from a one-year construction plan for the roof to now a two-year construction plan. There's been multiple resignations and issues with the Tourism Authority. And I know there's a bill, a bill passed with the Tourism Authority that overhauls its leadership structure. So I just, I don't necessarily have any questions in the interest of time, but I just wanted to stress my concerns that the construction there not go over two years as it severely impacts the businesses in the community that do get additional traffic from Convention Center conventions and as well as the conventions that are held there themselves that do support law, small businesses and small individuals that go there and sell items or host related events there.
I 100% agree in that. I was actually, I'm going to go to the Hawaii Tourism Authority Board tomorrow. And the reason why I was out there being vocalist, because I was prepping for that presentation that I'm going to give and to try to ask them to, you know, get their, you know, behave and not cause so much problems. But you're absolutely right. We have made many obligations and promises to many of our clients that want to use the Convention Center, and we've had to cancel on them because of the maintenance there. And this is a result of poor leadership by the Hawaii Tourism Authority. And as a result, we passed an about 1571, which overhauls their independent agency status and provides more public oversight on them.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Van de Brink, and Representative Adrian Tam for being here this evening.
I'm so jealous you're going to move to Italy. Congratulations. Say hi to Popeye.
Thank you, Rep. Tam. Hey, continuing on, we have Mr. Ben Sullivan from Mayor Blangiardi's office. Thank you, as always, for being here.
It's always a pleasure to be here with the Board. I am going to be more brief than I ever have been because it's late. So a couple of updates from the Mayor's Newsletter, which you can certainly check for more detail. One, I think really importantly is the city and the state leaders are looking to recruit more guardians at Lightem to help houseless folks. And it's a really important role, especially if there's attorneys that would be willing to volunteer for this role. It's really to help people that don't have the ability to kind of help themselves through the court system, to get them resources and to get them the help that they need and the treatment that they need. So please check the newsletter for that. One other update is that Mayor signed bills relating to Waikiki Street Festivals, which I imagine you guys are all aware of, and then also outdoor dining rules. And so I think those are two really important updates that add value to the community. One other update relevant to the conversation previously, there was a question about whether to call 911 or whatnot. I think it was relating to Fort Street Mall. But I just wanted to mention the CORE, which I think you guys have received presentations on before. But CORE is an acronym, C-O-R-E, that stands for Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement. That's a city team that actually is directed to deal with houseless folks directly themselves, and they're equipped to do so. Their whole purpose is to actually try to reduce the incidence of folks in hospitals and to help take off the load from HPD and all that. And they really do a great job, and it's about relationships for them. They're trying to connect people, help them understand that they're there to help and and not just forcing them into a situation, figure out what the right solution is for any given person. It's always different for everyone. So those are three quick updates. The last one, I think, is really just an item that was a follow-up from last meeting. It was funny because I don't know that we covered it, but it was basically specifically, Member Mariano brought up the sidewalk on Kapilani Boulevard. And I don't, I don't, did the DUF conversation cover that? No, okay, so the update is that DUF did do an inspection, and they are working closely with facility maintenance to mitigate the sidewalk condition concern. As soon as the excavation work has been completed, DUF, Arbus, will inspect and make a determination as to how to proceed. But, you know, the reality is they have to actually look at the root structure that they see because they have to assess the size and whether the tree can handle any kind of modifications. But that's the update on that. And we'll certainly give you more information if we get it from the Department of Facility Maintenance. That's all I have. That was quick, right?
Yay, thank you.
Congratulations. Belong, is that right? Amazing. Yeah, good for you.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Sullivan. Any questions from the Board for Mr. Sullivan? Member Mariano, do you have any questions for? Good, okay, good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, we'll keep going down the list of elected official reports, and then we'll go to Agency Reports. State Senator Sharon Morawaki or her office representative, I see Joseph Kopshy online.
Can you see me?
Yes.
All right, hey, good evening, everybody. I just, I'll keep it quick, just to kind of tap into what everybody else has been talking about as far as the budget getting passed. I know Senator Morawaki worked extremely closely with Rep. Tam to ensure that the district received a lot of funding, especially when it came to CIP. So you should see a lot of improvements within the district in the coming years. Other than that, Sandai's kind of wrapped up. And now we're, we're moving on to and preparing for next year's session.
Thank you, Mr. Kopshy. Question from the Board? Okay, thank you for being here this evening. Representative Ikkaa Olds.
Good evening, everybody. Just going to do it real quick, so it looks like I'm the last one on this list. So real quick legislative update. HB, my bill HB 943, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Triage Program, passed out of the House, and we're just waiting for Gov. to sign it. Essentially, what it would do is allow for a post-treatment site for people who are experiencing acute mental health or substance abuse incidences so they can get out of the behavioral crisis center and transition directly into a more long-term substance abuse or mental health treatment program. We also passed HB 431, which supports the Kohol Initiative. It also requires an audit conducted by the Auditor of Management and Performance within the Kohol Initiative. So we're going to be making sure that all the money that we're giving to them is not being wasted. Put some phone numbers into the chats, just to answer, so IHs is the number, their outreach line, Allohi Nightways, Two in One Line and CORE. So in case anybody has any homeless situations, those would be the numbers to get in contact with, or you can always call me. And just to follow up with some of the conversations that we've had in the past and what's going on today. So for Kalakaua Homes, the pine trees. So an arborist did come out to check the Norfolk pines and the monkey pod trees back in March. One additional tree was removed from the site after that, that one tree fell. And the arborists found that they should probably remove the other one. They do periodic checks by the arborist and regular maintenance. And there was also talks about the alarms going off at Kalakaua Homes. And so Kalakaua Homes just got back to me on Saturday. The property manager said that there are false alarms in April and May. This was coming from their call to aid system. Essentially, there are pull cords in one of the buildings in the living room and the bathroom. So these were designed for kapuna. And what's happening is, according to him, it's accidentally getting pulled in bathrooms. And it lights up all the lights and alarms in the entire building. So it creates a big thing, and the only way for it to get turned off is in a panel in the lobby. So the management basically has to respond, and that's probably why it's, there's some long durations of the alarms going off. Someone has to respond, go in and turn it off manually, but also making sure that the kapuna that's triggering the alarm is safe. So they're not going to remove it because it's a safety feature for seniors. But they're going to try to find ways to ensure that these false alarms, because it's been so regular over the last couple of months, how they can kind of alleviate this, whether it's talking to the residents and kind of informing them like, hey, you know, be careful around these, you know, these pull wires. They're going to try to figure that out internally. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. One question. And then after this, in the interest of time, if you have any other questions for the people coming up, please save them for the end, just so we can go through the rest of our agenda tonight. And we need to be out of here by 9:00 PM.
Of course, I'll keep this quickly. So one of the units, I don't believe it was Kalakaua Homes, but one of the buildings right behind it, three weeks ago on Sunday, one of the alarms actually went off there. And it was actually going off about every five to 10 minutes over the course of four hours. I think it was like 60 or 70 times the fire alarm went off. I actually got woken up in the morning around nine o'clock because of it. I don't know if it was going on earlier than that, but I can only imagine the residents there have a really big inconvenience of the fire alarm going off that frequently throughout the morning. But I'm glad that I haven't heard it go off since. I don't know if maintenance was done, but I just wanted to bring that issue to your attention.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Member Van de Brink, and thank you, Rep. Olds, for being here this evening. You're actually not the last one. So thank you for being on. We appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you guys so much.
Moving on to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam, I saw Robin Henskey from his office.
Hi, guys. I tried to put everything in the chat so that just in case we ran out of time, it would be there in writing. But yes, today during the budget hearing, we heard Bill 60. And next week is going to be third reading for the budget bill. Sorry, my puppy's teething, biting my ankles. So sorry, guys. But yeah, I'm here. Please feel free to contact me with any questions.
Thank you, and we appreciate you, Ms. Henskey. You've always been very accessible. So thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Governor Josh Green's representative, I saw Ashton Stallings online.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go. Perfect, all right. Well, I put in the chat the Governor's main newsletter. Check it out. If you have any questions, you can ask me. But nice summaries over the past month, strides are being made with the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund Equity Program. Sorry, my, her puppy was teething. My cat is being disruptive. But April also marked, it's one of those nights. April marked five years since the Hawaii National Guard's response to COVID. So there's a nice summary in there. If you have any kids that are pre-K age, or if you know anyone who has kids who are pre-K age, I'd urge you to go to earlylearning.hawaii.gov. There are continued opportunities for public pre-K. May is Pride and Public Service Month, so thank you to all of those individuals. And then Operation Hire Hawaii is still in full swing. But all of that's in the newsletter. Check it out.
Thank you, Ms. Stallings, from a governor's office. Appreciate you being here tonight. Congressman, Congressman Ed Case, I don't see representative. Moving on back to Agency Reports, HCD.
Aloha, it's Francine Murray from HCD. Good to see you all. And yes, May is Public Service Month. Thank you all for your service and for volunteering for this board. You do so much for our community. Also wanted to thank you for your commitment to our parks and open spaces and public, public places. Thank you so much for that. I'll make it quick. They're still working on the repairs at Koloala Dog Park. Today, they're repairing the gates. That will open June 9. And after that, they're going to close the small dog park because it's been so busy with the large side closed. Now we need a lot of repairs there. So I don't know how long that will be closed, but I'll keep you posted. Our newsletter was posted in the chat. It kind of just has an article about the opening of the Alamoana pedestrian park, I mean pedestrian bridge, and our next board meetings on June 4.
Thank you, Ms. Francine Murray, for being here this evening. And we have one quick question.
Hi, Francine, it's Jeannie Rice. Hi, Jeannie. The park's looking great, by the way. It's very exciting, and everyone is very happy that it's being restored. And and I'm telling everyone, the small dogs side will close ultimately. I just have a quick favor to ask. I talked with Craig Nakamoto about this about a year or so ago. The public storage building at the corner of Kamakee and Kapilani is an eyesore. They don't maintain their landscaping whatsoever, and it's the gateway into Ward Village on Kamakee Street. I've attempted to speak with, I don't know if she's even still there, the gal Chiave, who is the gal, Chandra Chiave, I think her name is, who was an interim manager of the facility. And I just think she doesn't, doesn't have the authority, if you will, with the owners of the building. So if you guys could revisit that, please, and reach out to the owner of the property. It's really, you have those two condominiums, you have Duraku and Pacifica, and then 909. Their grass is beautiful, their landscaping is beautiful. This building doesn't have any landscaping. It's all leaves falling from the trees above. So thank you, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to them.
Okay, we will.
Thank you, Member Rice, and thank you, Ms. Francine Murray, for being here this evening. Last one on the list is Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation, or HART.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, good evening, Chair Lee, Board members and committee new members. My name is Marissa Gonzalez with HART's Public Involvement Team. Joining us online is Patrick Watson from Frank v Calucio Construction. In case there are any questions about our downtown work, just a few updates, I'll make it quick. The airport guideway and stations in Segment 2, Construction and Core System Installation, are complete for four stations, and that's from Pearl Harbor Airport Lagoon to Middle Street. Testing is currently in progress, and we're targeting an opening date of October 1, 2025, as announced by the Mayor Blangiardi at the City and State Address. The trial run phase is expected to be completed this July, followed by the system demonstration phase for the city center guideway and stations. The segment includes three miles of guideway and six stations continuing from Middle Street to Civic Center. The guideway shaft construction work is expected to begin this summer in Ivalae. The downtown utility relocations from Kahahi Street to Cook Street have also cleared the way for that guideway work. My last update is HART and our contractor, Tutuparini Corporation, invited the public to attend, is inviting the public to attend our first two neighborhood design workshops for the Chinatown Station on Thursday, June 26. This is a chance for the public to share input and ask questions about the preliminary station design. If you cannot attend in person, you can still provide feedback online or by email. We'll also be hosting design workshops for the other city center guideway and stations, locations, Kalihii, Honolulu, Community College, Ivalae Downtown and Civic Center in the next coming months. That concludes my update. I pasted the Chinatown Station Neighborhood Design Workshop flyer in the chat box. So you can go, also go ahead and visit honolulutransit.org for more information. You can always call our 24-hour project hotline at 808-566-22999. That concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, for that concise report and for all the resources that you have posted on our chat. We appreciate you. Announcements, we have the Kinkamae Ha Celebration Floral Parade on June 14. We also have a link here for all the events going on around the area. Social media accounts, as always, we have the links on here for Facebook and Instagram. The next Action Committee meeting will be on Thursday, June 12. This will be our Action Committee Chair, Emma Davis', last meeting before she jets off to leave for Gradsville. And the next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, June 24. O'Leary Broadcast recordings are on here. Thank you to O'Leary, as always, for being here and supporting our Neighborhood Board meeting. And that is it. We are adjourned at 8:51 PM.